Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manashe Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a redeemed justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Yes.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's regarding the rezoning of a property at 528 Milwaukee Street. Director Schrader, would you please tell us a little bit about the proposal? If we can make your microphone go on. Did someone turn it on yet this evening?
Just activate it. Just push it.
There you go. Now you're all good.
All right. Thought I was gonna get away without talking tonight. So in front of us today is a rezoning to rezone 528 Milwaukee Street, better probably known as Willski's Pub. This is the pub on the corner of Milwaukee Street and Sixth Street from I-1 Heavy Industrial to C-1 General Commercial. This rezoning was part of a CSM proposed lot line adjustment with the neighboring property. Looking at the certified survey map and then discussions with our planner, it was, I believe, requested that, or looked at that staff would support this certified survey map should the property also be rezoned to C-1 General Commercial. So the restaurant or eatery dining service existing on the facility does not, is illegal nonconforming use within the I-1 Industrial District. So by modifying that, that lot line gives us the ability to look at that property and try to bring that into conformance. So by rezoning this property to C-1 again, this would allow for that property to conform to our zoning code as far as the use goes. I do want to note just today, there was a bit of a hiccup, I guess I'll call into this proposal. The property is currently on a land contract that is, the current bar owners have a land contract with the property owner to purchase this property. However, the building encroaches onto the neighboring property, hence why they had to do a certified survey map to bring, to allow the bank to get a mortgage or a loan out on this property. So they temporarily did a land contract while they worked out the situation to adjust the lot line for this project. I do want to note that, so the individual that staff was working with was the surveyor at the time, so the, again, staff was in communications with that surveying company, but they were not necessarily in communications with the person that had the land contract. So I do know there's, the land contract owners are here tonight and do have some concerns and staff has discussed this with them and potentially would recommend pushing this back to Plan Commission for further review, looking at additional background to make sure Plan Commission and staff, as well as the owners of Willski's Pub and the land contract owners have a good starting point to make sure we're all on the same page and to look at this.
So with that, if anyone would like to make a comment about the proposed public, proposed rezoning, you'd have that opportunity at this time. You just come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Barb Wilson. I am the owner of Willski's. This is Bill Pavletzky. Willski. So a lot of people ask how we got our name. We were just made aware that we were on the agenda. We just found this out late, late last night. So we did come in and talk to Sam today. The paperwork that's currently on file doesn't even have my name on it. It has the previous owner's name. So what we are asking right now is, we don't understand what the zoning is industri-- I mean, I understand the difference, I'm not stupid, commercial versus industry. We just don't understand how that's going to impact us. Right now, we are just trying to purchase that property outright. We are under land contract. We own it. Legally, we own it. The land is encroaching on railroad property. Somebody let somebody encroach on that property. It wasn't me. It wasn't anyone in this room, but it was the City of Manashe. Okay? So, so right now, what we're trying to do is just get this property purchased from the railroad so that we can have a legal lot line and get a title through the title company. The surveyors had to go through. I mean, this has been going on since 2017 November. So I'm just asking that you just hold off on making any changes to this property so that we can just buy the darn thing outright and continue to contribute to the city. I mean, we are really, we're doing well and we're very happy. I think we have a lot of friends. I see some among you. So we would really appreciate your support in just, at least prolonging this so that we can get more facts about the difference and how it's going to impact us because we do have quite a bit of property and we would like to develop that. We're just not quite sure what we're gonna do with that yet, so how it's zoned might impact that. So is, does that sound fair? You know, so that's what I'm asking for, is just at least--
The, one of the questions I have is, number one, and excuse me if I'm a little harsh, but this is more than a hiccup. This is, we've owned this property for a year and a half. This goes through a whole planning commission and now it's brought in front of you and we find this out as owners last night. That I don't, I don't understand how that happens. We've gone through other issues, many issues, that have gone through the Manashe system. And I just don't understand how we have to change our zoning just because we want to purchase 12 feet of railroad property.
Right. And it's not that we want to, we have to.
We, yeah. We have to do this--
A building is on their property. We have to--
To get our--
Title.
Title insured by the title company. We did not want to do this. We were forced to do this. And I'm assuming the reason why Judy's name is on there is because previous owner, of course, but yet she is the one that's, that paid for the survey because this was kind of her issue that she needed to clear up before we bought it. And, once again, I, I mean, I understand laws, I understand the ifs, ands, and buts. And I just want to, one comment is, before people go out and vote on something, look at why the reasons that there are rules and regulations and why they were made. We're not, we're not, there's nobody in back of us. It's a railroad. And there's, we're not affecting anybody else's lot. We're not affecting anything, but now we have to change our zoning. What that means is, I don't know, because I don't know enough--
We didn't have enough time--
Yeah, I don't know what that restricts us not being industrial anymore. I don't know.
For our future. That's what we're looking at. I'm pretty sure the bar is safe. By the way, we don't have dining. Just that. All right. Any questions or anything that you need to ask us?
Well, thank you for coming tonight and we'll discuss it when we get to that point on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did an amazing job with the inside.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So the second item is a second special use permit from Shoe Construction and it's to establish a car wash on a parcel in the C-1 Commercial District at 1462 Appleton Road. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. So just as you stated, we did get another request to construct another car wash on 1462 Appleton Road. So this is just in front of Pigly Wiggly, between Pigly Wiggly and Highway 47, just south of their access drive. I believe the former ANW site for those of you that were here longer than I have been. But, so with this, again, we kind of had just gone through this process, but any car wash facility does require a special use permit by our zoning code within the C-1 zoning district. So again, special use permit would require public hearing notices, would be required to go in front of Plan Commission to make a recommendation for Common Council for final action. So again, staff did bring forward a special use permit as well as a site plan process to the City Plan Commission. The City Plan Commission did have concerns with the proposed facade that was on that, not meeting our ordinance. So they did hold back or postpone the site plan review process to make sure that that facade is, does have another look at that, to make sure it is conforming with our ordinance as well as past projects. But again, did not want, did not see an issue with the proposed use. So again, approved the special use permit to move forward, obviously requiring council approval, did not want to hold them up in that fashion. And then the site plan will be re-reviewed next Tuesday at the Plan Commission meeting on June 25th. So again, with that, the Plan Commission did review the proposed project and recommended approval of the special use permit provided with the understanding that the five conditions were met that are listed on your packet agenda.
So at this point, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, you're more than welcome to do so. We would need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. I'm Jay McKee-Free, N 9351 Isar Road, Seymour, Wisconsin. I just wanted to add that we have already resubmitted the site plan based on the recommendations by the Plan Commission. We did so last week. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we're already in the process of working with them to make sure that the site plan that we have does follow the ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Beautiful job on the street. Was concerned about, when are we planning on having trees planted? And the other concern I have is the railroad tracks there on Racine and 47, they're getting pretty rough on our vehicles. Thank you.
So right now, we're on the special use permit, but thank you, Robert, for your comments. I did want to comment about the railroad tracks. We have been working with Canadian National. We have not succeeded in getting any help from them on those tracks. So if you look at every crossing, there is a phone number on the side of that crossing. One of the best ways to get them repaired is to have numerous people call. So if you could call that number and tell the railroad that the crossing is bad, that would help us immensely.
Thank you.
So seeing no one else for the public hearing then, we'll call the public hearing to a close. We do have, oh, next item is the report of department heads. And we do have Nick Romanesco here from Gold Cross. Gold Cross gives me and usually the Health Department an update on where they're going as a business and what types of calls and things that they're working on. And every two or three years, I ask them to come and address the council as well. So Nick is here this evening and I'll leave it to you at this point.
Well, thanks for having me. I'll wait till this gets going here, but, so if, those of you who don't know Gold Cross, we've been around this area for quite some time, servicing the City of Manashe for quite some time. We're very proud of the work that we do in the city. I'm the Systems Director, so I oversee the operations and communication center. So everything, basically the nuts and bolts of the operation. I've been doing that for about seven months. I've been with Gold Cross for about, going on eight years now, so a little bit about me. So our mission at Gold Cross is to respond to the healthcare and specialized transportation needs of the communities we serve in a high quality and efficient manner. We strive to meet the challenges of the people we serve with dedication, compassion, and professionalism. And then our vision is to be the best in EMS. And we really look at this and reflect on this on a daily basis at our organization, so I thought it was important to share with you guys. If you guys have any questions as we go through, feel free to interject. So a little history, we were established in 1967 by a gentleman named Jim Welch and he advanced up to that paramedic level in 1974. So that's basically the highest level of emergency medical services you can provide in the state of Wisconsin is that paramedic level. And we've been at that level since 1974. And then in November of 1990, the business was actually sold to Novus Corp., which is now Theta Care. And another business called Metro Ambulance was actually purchased by Sanes and Mercy Medical Center, which was Affinity at the time. And there's actually two ambulance services in this area. And then shortly after those two healthcare organizations kind of purchased those two ambulance services, they merged together and created Gold Cross for what it is today. So what we are is really a regional system and we're governed by the two healthcare systems. We have a Board of Directors with four individuals from the Theta Care organization, four individuals from Ascension. So that's kind of how we're governed and set up as an organization. We're set up as a nonprofit underneath those two healthcare organizations. In May of 2013, we took over some additional service area in Wapaka County. We took over about 12 townships, villages, and cities in the Wapaka area. And then New London Family Medical Center Ambulance came along with us in 2015. And then recently, in October of 2017, we advanced our service up to the critical care level for interfacility transport. So all the extremely sick and ill individuals who need to transport out of hospitals to another hospital, we have a specialized critical care team that can do advanced interventions, advanced monitoring for these patients. So they're doing those hospital, hospital transports and we'll get into a little bit of their capabilities later on. So we do more than just ambulance work. So we do emergency, non-emergency, and neonatal transports, all the little babies who are born at hospitals and need care at a neonatal intensive care unit down at Children's in NINA. We'll do all the transports with a specialized children's team down there. We do a lot of standbys and special events. So you'll see our paramedics at farmers markets and special events, Oktoberfest. We have a bike team down there that does special events. So you'll see us out and about in the community as well, doing those things. We're a clinical teaching site, so we do EMT students, paramedic students that are in the technical schools. They'll come in, they'll intern with us, they'll learn about the trade and the craft and that will help us kind of train and mentor the next generation paramedics in this, in the Fox Cities here. We have an external education program that's what we're really proud of. We do first aid, AED, and blood-borne pathogen training for over 6,000 industrial professionals throughout the year. So within Manashe, some of the industries elect to utilize Gold Cross for that training, which is great. It creates a nice tie between the 911 ambulance service and the industries when they have to call 911 in the event of an emergency. They know what to expect. They were trained by us and we can kind of have that connection with their first aid teams in those industries. We do AED sales and then we have actually three consulting contracts right now. We manage NEW Paramedic Rescue in Pulaski, CMC or Ascension Calumet Hospitals Ambulance, and then Brillian Ambulance as well. So our footprint is fairly large in the Fox Cities. We go basically all the way down to the town of Oshkosh, north to Black Creek, Seymour, and Shaktin. It's a kind of a cutoff on the north and then all the way out west. And we're a regional ambulance service. So we run a little bit differently than municipality-owned ambulance services, which means we have 14 ambulances on throughout the day, but we are not dedicated to those areas. So you're gonna have ambulances moving and shifting out of the City of Manashe throughout the day and that's really depending on what's going on in our system. So we continue to be owned 50% by Theta Care and 50% by Ascension. And that's a map we use in our dispatch center called Dispatch Pro and that really helps us determine where our calls are coming in and how they're coming in. So again, 14 ambulances on each day. We have 12 stations and then two roving units. And really, I say stations, but they're out and about. Basically, between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, they're out posting and driving and going between calls and sitting on street corners depending on where the need is for ambulance service. So what we look at is, what can we touch in eight minutes or less is really the timeframe that we look at in our business is, what can we touch in eight minutes or less? We want to touch at least 90% of our service area that we can get an ambulance to in eight minutes or less. City of Manashe, we do a really great job of getting an ambulance to 911 emergency call in eight minutes or less almost all the time. So we do a really good job and we'll get to those numbers shortly. Well, 308 coverage hours each day, so on a 24-hour swing, we have 308 hours of coverage for ambulance in our region. And we use a posting system, so an ambulance might, could be coming in from Wapaka and they're transporting a Theta Care in NINA and they clear up and they're the closest call to the City of NINA, they're gonna get that call. And that's the benefit of a regional system. Every ambulance in our system could respond into the City of Manashe in the event of an emergency. So we really can pull and move those resources around in our service area so that all the time we have coverage in the southern part of Winnebago, or northern part of Winnebago County and the City of Manashe and the surrounding areas here. We utilize 13 different posting locations and those posting locations are based off of that eight minutes or less timeframe as well. So we utilize our system, we can put a posting location into it and it can tell us what that ambulance can cover in eight minutes or less. So it actually gives a little outline of what it can touch. So we use that to determine where the most strategic posting locations are in the City of Manashe to cover that area the best we can. We have a total of 1,200 square miles, about 280,000 people live within our service area and we average about 23,000 annual responses. And we'll get to the numbers in the City of Manashe here shortly. So this is your city here and then this is kind of what we look at and where our ambulance may be seated through, stationed throughout the day. Right here is our headquarters, right here. So that's our main office right in the City of Manashe. And then this ambulance is gonna be a really important one to talk about here and that's, we call that posting location five or P5. And that posting location has proven to be really, really beneficial to the City of Manashe and we'll get into why that is in a minute here. And then we have an ambulance at St. Elizabeth's, ambulance in Fox Crossing to the northwest there, and then ambulance right in NINA and that's basically our service area there in the northern portion of Winnebago County and kind of how we cover it with ambulances. So again, this is kind of a good outlay of where the ambulances are coming from and how they're responding to the City of Manashe. So it's not just one ambulance that's covering the City of Manashe. We use every ambulance in our service area to cover this city the best we can with the resources we have available. In the, in the picture that you saw previously, medic one through five were in that picture and then the rest were not. So they weren't, they're not necessarily stationed in the City of Manashe or near the City of Manashe, but when you get busy down here in the city, we're able to pull those resources down to the southern part of our service area and they'll respond in the City of Manashe so that we can cover your area even if the ambulances who are typically dedicated to this area are out at the time. And that's one of the huge benefits of a regional system is we have these 12 ambulances or 14 ambulances during the day at our disposal basically all the time. So response times, so our goal in the City of Manashe is eight minutes or less, we want an ambulance on scene 90% of the time or better. So that's our goal in the City of Manashe and all the cities that we service, that's the goal. And it differs depending on if you're established as a township or a village, but as a city, it's eight minutes or less and 90% of the time. So you look at some historical data, we've done a very, very good job of hitting that 90 percentile mark in the City of Manashe. We had a slight dip in 2018 and that's when we really started to look at you guys and say, how can we service the City of Manashe a little bit better? And so we took that Dispatch Pro system, we looked at a few different posting locations, we determined that post five or P5 was the best location to put an ambulance so that we can also service other parts of our service area, but then again, make sure that we're servicing the City of Manashe the best we can. And since we did that in February, you can see the time changes. So we went from mid to high 80s the previous four to five months and then we went up to 95, 94, 97, a little dip in May at 89, and then 93.94% in June. So that change really made a big difference. So we're constantly looking at our response times, constantly looking at our coverage and making sure that we're covering the City of Manashe with ambulances the best we can and meeting that 90% goal on a yearly and really monthly basis we look at this. Another thing, so we're working right now with the City of Manashe Health Department on an opioid grant and trying to make sure we can taper off some of the opioids specifically in the City of Manashe. So we look at Narcan use, so Narcan is a medication that's given to patients when they overdose on opioids. So we're looking at those numbers pretty close year to year, not only in the City of Manashe, but in our region in general. And as you can see, we creeped up a little bit, but it's been fairly flat over the last four years. We're up a little bit in the first six months in June, so something to keep an eye on. We're kind of optimistic that the work that Nancy's doing in the Health Department alongside Chief Steichen and Chief Klon that we're gonna make an impact on that number in the years to come. And then another thing we've looked at in the City of Manashe specifically is, is the fall. So falls is the number one 911 ambulance call in really Gold Cross's region. And every single city that we look at, we look at what's the number one reason people are calling 911 and surprisingly enough, it's falls. People are falling, people are getting older and aren't trusting their bodies as much and we're seeing a lot of falls. We're working with several different organizations to try to prevent falls in this region, up again, a little bit in the first six months of 2019. So something that we look at as well. That critical care team, I talked a little bit about it, so it's a newer staffing model for us, but it's, they're actually stationed right in NINA, so they're right down the street from you guys and they respond in the City of Manashe quite a bit. So they're the highest trained paramedics you can have in the state of Wisconsin. They do advanced level care, so they have additional continuing education, additional training. They do in-hospital clinical experience on a yearly basis. They can do invasive ventilator use, so that's a ventilator that you would typically see in a hospital, they're able to do that in the back of an ambulance. They can do invasive pressure monitoring, different things with our cardiac monitors and then they can do all kinds of different medications, titrations and initiation in the back of an ambulance that typical paramedics are unable to do. And then we have top-line cardiac monitors, so the Zolex series monitors we have in all of our frontline ambulances. We have a Stryker Power Cotton Power Load System that is newer in all of our ambulances as of 2019. All of our frontline ambulances have that system in it. So basically what it is, it's a hydraulic lifting system, so it allows the paramedics or firefighters with, or police officers who are helping us on scene to not have to lift these patients. So it's a huge saver for our backs and our bodies throughout the years to make us a little bit more durable and our paramedics be able to avoid injury and your firefighters will be able to avoid injury as well. So it's been a huge benefit. We have video laryngoscope, so basically it's a laryngoscope that you can see into somebody's throat and there's a video monitor on top to help us with intubations or putting a breathing tube in somebody. We have auto pulses which helps us on cardiac arrest for consistent and high-quality compressions for CPR. And then we have pediatric specialty care bags in all of our ambulances. So sick little kiddos, we're able to have specialty equipment for them and treat them in a different way because of the equipment we carry. We partner with 28 different volunteer fire and police agencies who, including the Manashe Fire and Manashe Police Department, to help them with AD placement certifications. Each EMR group has a paramedic that's employed at Gold Cross that is kind of the goal between us and them to make sure we have a good solid relationship. I work really closely with Chief Klon and Chief Steichen on a monthly basis and we really work together well and we really enjoy the relationship that us, our three organizations have together. And then right now, we're in an accreditation process, which is a long, grueling process. So we're going through this process right now. We submitted some of our information, we got our initial feedbacks. We have to go and get some more information together and get that resubmitted to them. We're expecting a site visit either September of 2019 and they might actually put it, push it to January of 2020 now after some of the information that they requested from us last time. But the good part about that is it looks at our operations, looks at our clinical quality, looks at our safety and kind of puts a stamp of approval that yes, the City of Manashe is getting the best, highest quality ambulance service they can based on industry standards. So we're really excited for what that's brought to our organization. If we are successful in achieving that accreditation, we'll be actually the first ground ambulance service without a helicopter associated with it to become CAM certified in the state. So not only are you guys getting really good response times, but it's, when we get there and when we get to your citizen sides, we're providing the best quality care we can as well. So that's gonna be a big achievement and we're excited about that and it's been quite the process so far. Like us on social media, if you have social media, it's, we post a lot of fun-- Like us on social media, if you have social media, it's, we post a lot of fun stuff, what we're doing in the community, how we're helping the community. So feel free to check that out. Additional information on our website as well on our service area and how we provide service. Any questions?
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
Is there any questions from anyone? So it was nice to have you guys come out and talk.
You bet.
New face. Steve's been doing this for years, so it's nice to see you now as well.
A little young blood, right?
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you.
Thanks so much. The second item is the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevignac.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through D and communications E through J.
So motion in a second. I was asked to highlight item F. We are going to do a ribbon cutting and a grand opening of the new province terrace trail tomorrow morning at ten-thirty. You're all welcome to come out. We'll have some kids from the Manassas School Summer Program and Hecrod there to talk a little bit about the wetlands as well as some of our staff. So we'd love to see you out there as well. Any other items that anyone has questions on? Seeing no one, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments or any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council this evening? If I can get it to turn on, there you go.
Can this, is this open for any, anything that's going on?
Yeah, so if we can get your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate that as well.
Dan Sharp, twenty-two thirty-three East Shady Lane, Nina. I am the pastor of the Fox Cities United Pentecostal Church on Midway Road and the Fox Valley Race, the, I think, is that the name of it? The marathon. We have, for years, it, it happens on Sunday. It's right, it starts right across the street from our church and we love the race and we're all for the race, but it's starting to get to where it's affecting people that want to attend church. Some of the streets like Taco Street, a few other streets, I can't remember the names off the top of my head, but some of those streets are closed down. Well, here's the names of them. Beck Street, North Ridge Court, Hickory Hollow Lane, Old Midway, Lake Shore Drive, Taco Street, Broad Street, Valley Road area. All of those affect, I know on, just on two of those streets, we've got five, five different families. And so it's really creating a problem for people to get to church, they can't even get out of their driveway to get to church. I guess our question is, and we, again, we're friendly, they use our parking lot and we're happy to be of service any way we can to them, but is, is it possible that we can, instead of blocking like Taco and Lake Street, some of those different roads, is it possible to block half of the road so that our parishioners can get out of their driveway to get to church? I, I received something in the mail concerning this.
Sure. And I guess the best place to go would be to the marathon and ask them about that. Many of the streets though, except for Midway Road are only partially blocked because there aren't that many runners all at the same time. But I would definitely check with the race organizers and talk to them about that as well.
Okay. Most of these that I'm referring to are closed completely from seven-ten AM to one, one PM, one forty PM. And so we've got every year, several people from our church can't come to church that day and it's starting to create, you know, a little bit of problems. So, so is that, we contact them, is that?
I would definitely contact them and see what they could do to help. They could, could they put it a different day? I don't know. Can, some of the more urban areas, could your parishioners park across the street, on across the street and walk across?
It's not a problem with parking, it's a problem with people getting out of their driveways on these other streets.
Could they park across the street the night before so that they could get out?
What, and spend the night across the street?
Well, I guess it depends on how far away that is from their house, but like Taco Street, I would think that they could.
No, but how, how do they get to church though?
And I understand, living on the island, we've been cut off for quite some time as well.
I think, I think the, the problem is, is their houses are on Taco Street, different location and they can't get out of their driveway, not our driveway, not, not the church location.
So.
Yeah, they'll park the car overnight on the street, cross the street, a block away.
A block from their house? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they'll let them do it, I'm sure. You say, we can't get out tomorrow and go to church. We're leaving our car parked on the street, a block down or on a side street. And then they'll have to walk to their car.
Okay.
I would talk to the race organizers, you can definitely call us at City Hall and we can talk about it too and see if we can come up with some other solutions. As you said, these events are great events.
Yeah, they are.
We all need to work together to try to figure out how to make it least inconvenient for some of the residents as well.
Right.
So, yeah, if you want to give my office a call tomorrow, I'll see if I can.
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to them first and then if, if that doesn't work, and we've, we've worked together through some difficult situations in the past and we've always been able to work things out. So I'll try that, see how that works.
Yeah, okay. Good luck and hopefully we can work something out with you.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Apparently not, I thought that she was going to get up to speak. So we'll move on to item G, which is the consent agenda. There are ten items on the agenda this evening. The common council minutes from June thirtieth, June third. The Board of Public Works recommendations from June third for the street use application for Midwest Sun Splash for Friday night. The street use application for Midwest Sun Splash for Saturday. July twenty-seventh, the street use application for Twisted Pistons. Thursday, August fifteenth, the street use application for the Community First Fox Cities Marathon. On Sunday, September twenty-second, the change order for Yankee General Contractors for the Province Terrace Trail was an add of seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. A payment for Yankee General Contractors for the Province Terrace Trail in the amount of a hundred six thousand dollars, six hundred fifty-four and fifty-three cents. Payment for Summers Construction for new street construction, Province Terrace Jenny Street, Province Link, Midway Crossing, two hundred forty thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dol, eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. The Plan Commission recommendations for the special use permit for the car wash on fourteen ninety-two Appleton Road and the certified survey map for five twenty-eight Milwaukee Street. Does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Sevignac.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to separate item six, the change order to Yankee General Contractors, number seven, payment to Yankee General Contractors, number eight, payment to Summers Construction Company, Planning Commission Recommendations, nine and ten.
Okay. Any others? If not, could we have a motion for items one through five? Alderman Sevignac.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for that we approve the consent agenda items one, two, three, four and five.
Second.
So motion in a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Is it not working? Oh, okay.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item six? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the change order for Yankee General Contractors Incorporated, contract unit number two thousand nineteen dash zero-two for Province Terrace Trail, Nature's Way to US Highway Ten to State Highway One Fourteen to add seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars, twenty-one cents, change order number one.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, oh.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just, did they order the right, Brian, did they make the adjustment for the lights then? For ordering the right lights?
Scheduled to be here next week, my understanding.
Was that payment for those lights or not really? That extra seventy-six hundred?
No, I don't, I don't think those are for the lights, no.
Okay. All right, so we didn't have to pay anything extra for the lights?
No.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
So I see there's a few people in the audience, I don't know if they understood what just happened a minute ago. We did approve all of the street use applications just so that you're not sitting around waiting if you were waiting for those to happen. Item seven is for Yankee General Contractors as well?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment for Yankee General Contractors Incorporated, contract unit number two thousand nineteen dash zero-two for Province Trail Trail, Nature's Way, US Highway Ten to State Highway One Fourteen for one hundred and six thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-three cents, payment number five.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item eight, Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment to Summers Construction Company Incorporated, contract unit number two thousand nineteen dash zero-one for new street construction, Province Terrace Jenny Street, Province Link and Midway Crossing, various locations for in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars, fifty-seven cents, payment number two.
Second.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item nine is the special use permit. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the special use permit to allow a car wash at fourteen ninety-two Appleton Road and with the findings as listed on our agenda as recommended by the Plan Commission.
Is there, there's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam, last meeting, we approved the car wash on, right in front of Festival Foods on O'Naita Street. Currently, we have three car washes on Appleton Road within about a half mile of each other and this would pick a fourth car wash in this corridor. Is this a good decision for the city here?
The applicant obviously has owned the property and has gone through the proper approval process. I do not believe from the city's aspect, we can deny them based on, on there being additional car washes. Somewhere you couldn't deny a hair salon to going into a facility if there's additional hair salons. I, I do think that new development though is always good to make sure everyone's continuing to redevelop and make sure their facilities are at the highest standards.
But it's rather limited. I mean, it doesn't provide many jobs in the area. We're also landlocked and like I made my case last week on, on O'Naita Street and so another car wash could come and another car wash could come and there's nothing in our comprehensive plan with the density that would restrict any of these.
I do not believe our comprehensive plan directly calls out car wash facilities. But again, I, I do think these properties have been sitting vacant. You know, development is, is good to bring in other development. So again, the, you mentioned the, the property on O'Naita Street, I think those lots have sat vacant for many years. Obviously, new development oftentimes does trigger new development, so it, it could still be a very good thing for the city of Manassas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just some concerns, I definitely, if someone wants to put a business there. Thing is, you're competing with QuickTrip across the street and I just wonder what, how you took that into consideration. I just find that amazing because I use that QuickTrip car wash religiously. It's one of the best ones in the area. I was okay with O'Naita Street because they removed a car wash on that street and, and it's a different type of car wash too. And the other reason I was supportive is I had the opportunity to see the drawings and know what type of materials were being used and none of that's been provided to me. So, but that's, that's really unfortunate because I think the rest of us would have liked to have seen that. Maybe your business is something unique like the other car wash, the other car wash. We're looking at something in the half a million dollar plus range. I don't know what yours is going to be valued at or anything. I just, I just remember a few years ago when Walgreens was built, Osco Drugs wanted to build right across the street and I thought that was insane and I'm glad they never did because Osco Drugs eventually went out of business throughout the whole valley. We would have had a big building sitting there empty and so I'm just concerned what kind of marketing studies you've done that show that this is viable and I'm, I'm not in any way going to vote against this. I, I feel it's the risk that you're going to take. People always feel that their business is so much more unique than the next guy's. So with that being said, I just wish I had more information before me this evening as I was provided last meeting.
So we do have the owners here this evening? If we have unanimous consent to hear from them? Any objections? If you'd like. Did you want to speak first Ted or? Okay. We'll have Alderman Grady and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you. You know, echo a little bit of some of the thoughts by Alderman Sevignac and Alderman Taylor, but it's a vacant land. It's been sitting for a while now. Now, I welcome business to the city of Manassas, whether it's, you look at that corner, there's four gas stations. So now you're going to have a couple more car washes, but I won't say no to this. I think it's, it's the right thing to do, get something in there. The plans, like Alderman Sevignac said, but it has to be within code, it has to be within spec anyhow, otherwise you wouldn't get the permit. So we can, I think that's all I want to say is that, nay, thank you and developing that area and who knows what else can happen, but thanks.
Would you want to make some comments too? Why don't, yeah, I do need you to come up to the front of the race. We can't get you on camera. Everyone's anxious to be on camera, I know.
My name is Rebecca Lewis or Becky Lewis. I'm the property owner and I'm also Vice President of PDQ Car Washes. So to answer your questions, we've been around fifty-plus years. My father started PDQ Manufacturing, which developed all those cool little gas station car washes, really brought it into the twentieth century, if you will. And what we have found in all our phone, all our research is that there are two different have found, in all our phone, all our research, is that they're two different users. What we provide is not necessarily what the customer of QuickTrip wants, or vice versa. They're just very different styles of car washes. Ours are manned at all times, and that's part of our customer service. So that if there is an issue, customer can't get a vacuum to work, or whatever it might be, the vending machine jams, there's somebody there to help them. So they're, they're really completely different kind of washes. And we did take the number of washes in that area into concern when we first bought the property. But all the studies show Oneida Street's a little different corridor than where we are, and we're going to put 2.5 plus into that piece of property by the time we're done with it. So, we don't make that decision lightly. It, it needs to work, and it's all we do, is wash cars. So we don't sell the gas, we don't, and, and I love QuickTrip, except when they put a car wash in. But I love, personally, I love QuickTrip. I visit them often. They are, they are somebody to aspire to, as far as customer service, but we are really two different types of washes. I can answer any other question?
We will be hiring people.
Yes, we will. We'll have, depending on the season, a minimum of eight to 12 people, a minimum of two to four onsite at all times.
So again, looking at a 2.5 million dollar project, that would have to get ran through our assessors, look at the sale prices, things of that nature, I, I would still expect the, the end value to be in the 750 to a million dollar range, which again, looking at our tax rate, you know, would bring in anywhere from 8,200 to 1,000, or, not 82.
Eight thousand two hundred.
Eight thousand two hundred to $10,000 in tax revenue.
Did you have any pictures of what it may look like here tonight?
PDQ and Shoe Construction have worked together for 40 years, so they know what our standard is.
Just like an overall shot, so we can see what it looks like here.
If I just walk it across?
Sure. Oh, very nice.
If, if you've been up in Oneida Street in Ashwabanon in the past year, year.
Year.
We recently converted that.
In Oneida Street in Ashwabanon, we recently converted that one to this style of look. So they're, they're kind of going through a rebranding process right now, and, you know, looking to all future car washes to have the same type of look.
Certainly, that answers a lot of my questions. Thank you very much. PDQ has been around a long time. Very nice facility, thank you.
Thank you.
I was thinking it was going to be one of these little drive-up, nobody there, like down the street?
No, that's, that's not PDQ. It's a great option for a lot of people.
It's be, great for the, the young people there, living throughout the city here, too, for jobs. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions I can answer?
Oh, just, oh, yeah, what hour is it going to be, then? It's not a 24-hour service.
It is not a 24-hour service. I think it would be impossible to man it.
Right, yeah.
Right now, we're looking at seven in the morning till eight o'clock at night. In the, in the winter and the summer, sometimes, those hours vary. We won't know that till we get in there. But currently, most, or all of our exteriors are seven to, seven in the morning, eight at night.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I'm glad to hear that it's PDQ, because you have a very good reputation.
Thank you.
And also, I love the drawing, mainly because it's blue and white.
Thank you.
Good choice.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just had one quick question. By, by the design of the building, is your service going to include detailing?
It is not, at this time. There, the whole piece of property is not going to be used. Our Lewis and our Lewis is reserving the back half of the property. So, we could either build a detail center where you come through and go back around, and then you can get the full-service kind of thing that you're used to seeing in Appleton. But we've also talked about potentially putting a one- or two-store, two-to-three-store strip mall in that area as well. We're going to wait and see how this works, traffic flow. We're, we're very comfortable with it. But, so there's the potential for another building, another structure there.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, will you have a motion on the floor? If we could have a roll call vote, please? It's a long motion.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item 10 is a certified survey map for Milwaukee Street. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to send this, as recommended by our Community Development Director, back to the Planning Commission for further review and discussion.
There's a motion and a second to refer this to the Plan Commission. I'm sorry, Alderman Nichols, I didn't notice that your light was on first. But, Alderman Grady, whoops, I tried. There you go.
I guess I'm a little confused as to, and I agree with the owners, about what does this do to them versus the rezoning from heavy to general district. I mean, are they still allowed to serve alcohol? Again, there still could be a bar in that facility. I mean, is there any major, major changes that they have to make if this, this rezoning does happen?
No, basically, this would bring that building and that use into conformance. So, as, as the building sits right now, and is legal non-conforming, it can stay and maintain in its current shape. Let's say they would ever want to come and do an addition, something of that nature. By our code, they are not allowed to expand a legal non-conforming use. So that's technically, as the existing building stands, it's more restrictive now as an I-1 district than a C-1 district. Obviously, I think from Bill and Barb's question is that they have not had the opportunity to, to fully vet that, what that means. And that was kind of the conversation that I had with them earlier, is they would like that opportunity, and to ensure that is either a proper move for them, or potentially argue that they want that zoning to remain industrial.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Thanks.
Alderman Sevenik?
But the other point of the matter is, is that they have additional property there. And let's say, the chemical company next door wants to expand their facility, and they want to resell it. Now, they can't necessarily resell it for, because now it was zoned commercial. So, I think those things all have to be looked at. There's other things that you can do on your property as zoned industrial, that you can do that you can't as commercial, and I think Bill and would like to get more answers on that. So I think that's why it's a good idea that it goes back to planning.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I first wanted to ask if it was the preference of community development to postpone this item as well, until we sort out the details on the contract owner's end? I, I understand that's the motion on the table, but I wanted to ask that question.
I, I think that would be best. This gives, again, staff time to have the conversation with them directly versus with the, with the servicer that requested the CSM and the rezoning on the owner's behalf. Again, land contracts get, do get a little bit, do lose a little bit of history with them. So, again, we would like to make sure that we review this, we vet this, we have that communication and that conversation with the new potential property owner versus the servicer, as we had in the past.
Great, thank you for that. And having said that, I'd like to request that this, that these two items be kept together. In other words, this, the poss, the possible CSM and the possible zoning change, so that we don't lose track of either one of them, and we keep them together. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason also, I chose not to postpone over sending back to committee is, we can always postpone later. I don't want to give that opportunity up if that needs to come. And the other reason was because the property owners were never invited to those Planning Commission meetings, and I think they should be a part of those. So, that's why I'd like to send it back to the Planning Commission.
So the motion that's on the floor is to refer this back to the Plan Commission? I don't know if we really need a roll call vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is action items. The first one is the accounts payable and payroll for June 6th through 13th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the accounts payable. I move for the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June 6th, 2019, through June 13th, 2019, in the amount of $1,095,364.04.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, Becky?
I do. I'd like to remove a check.
Sure.
I'd like to remove check number 65015, in the amount of $50. That's made out to Jeff Nichols.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alderman Grady?
I was just curious about the archaeological findings in Jefferson Park, if there were any. And I don't know what check number that was.
Does any, anyone know about that?
Bitcoin.
I had it circled.
They didn't find anything.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
She's not telling. In other words, they phone Bitcoin.
Yes.
Did you have anything else, Ted?
No.
Sorry. So, so we have a motion for the accounts payable and payroll excluding check 65015. If we could have.
I'm just going to put 65015.
Did I get that right, 65015?
Yeah.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Then if we could have a roll call vote on check number, well, I should ask for discussion on 65015. And then if we could have a roll call vote on that one as well, please. Discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm abstaining from that.
Okay.
Vote, although it's, or, it's $50 for service on the Board of Review, and Jeff is my husband.
Motion carried on roll call seven zero, with Alderman Nichols abstaining.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 19. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period, as listed under approved in the Deputy Clerk's memo dated June 13th, 2019.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
There is one motion, one license recommended for denial. I don't know if Mr. Brant is
Steve Brant, 1119 Manor to Walker Road. Just wanted to come and kind of ask some questions about being denied as far as my bartending license. I've been a tonic nine years, next month. Work every weekend unless I take off, which doesn't happen very often. And I wasn't sure, I thought they changed the guidelines as far as how they look on past history, background checks and stuff. Because what it says here is like, the recent ones were 2011, '06, and '04. Like, well, if you can't move on from that, well, what do you do then, you know? I feel like I've been there long enough. I've helped, I think I busted five or six things now. Never been in trouble for selling to minors. Always cooperated with the police. Just, I don't know, just kind of curious what.
Attorney Captains, do you want to make any comments?
I did have an opportunity to read through the letter that was prepared, according to the city's policy, and they referenced the state statute in the guideline, one, section 125.045B, is if someone has been convicted of felony, unless that person has been duly pardoned, then it automatically comes before the common counsel for considerate. It automatically comes before the common counsel for consideration, because not only do we need to take that statute into consideration, we also need to take the statutes regarding discrimination into consideration. And so, if a sufficient period of time has passed, such that, and there are no other convictions, that those felonies, or that felony should not be taken into consideration. In this particular case, those felonies were in 2006, 2004. The last conviction for anything was in 2011, so there are a number of years that have passed. I will tell you that this individual has come before the common counsel on two other occasions, and they were denied. They were, I forgot what years they were, but it was a while ago.
Yes, it was.
They were much closer in time to the convictions than we're looking at now. So, it would be my opinion that the felony convictions should no longer be considered.
Alderman Sevenik?
Move that we allow for him to have his license.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Do you have anything else, Stan?
I'm sorry.
No. Alderman Nichols?
Just want to thank you for being here this evening.
No, thank you for having me, guys. Appreciate it.
Should I stand here?
You don't need to stand there. So if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Finish this, is this, to approve, right?
Yes.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
The police department doesn't recommend the approval. Okay. Item three is the beverage operators license applications for 2019 through 21. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the deputy clerk's memo dated June 13th, 2019.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item four is outdoor alcohol beverage service permit for Plank Road Pub. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the outdoor alcohol beverage service permit for the 2019 through 2020 licensing year at Plank Road Pub LLC, doing business at Plank Road Pub.
So, motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item five is a property acquisition at 205 Matheson Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for, to accept the property acquisition at 205 Matheson Street.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item six is a class P, class B liquor license application for Superior Mobile LLC for the 2019-20 licensing year. I don't know if. Alderman Nichols.
I'll follow staff's recommendation and make a motion to deny this application for a class B liquor license for Superior Mobile at 714 Appleton Road for the 2019 through 2020 licensing year.
There's a motion and a second. We do have the representatives here this evening. Agent, okay. And we do have staff, if anyone has questions for staff as well. I don't know where we want to start. Did the, would the agent like to, Pam, would you like to start or?
Is someone representing? You are? If, if you want to come up to the podium.
Hi. This is Linda Contreras.
Okay.
And I'm represented Superior.
And you are listed as the agent, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And is the owner of the business here?
No.
And I thought that she indicated she was going to be here tonight and asked for an interpreter?
Yeah. Something must have came up. She couldn't make it.
And so, let me ask you, I have some questions here. Did you have a chance to read through the materials that were in the packet for the common counsel?
Yep.
And is there any comment that you want to provide?
Yeah. The reason that I got denied is because of a person that was working for me. It's, he has some stuff in his record and I don't think that that's relevant to, for us to obtain the beer license because of someone that was doing a couple things for us. I mean, he's here, he can explain everything and talk and about it.
And so, with regard to your application. The application indicates that the trade name is Superior Lounge.
Correct.
And that the address of the premises is 714 Appleton Road.
Correct.
Tell me about the, is there a lease?
Yeah.
And what does the lease indicate?
That's something that you'd have to talk to Watt about. I'm just a manager. I don't, I don't get involved with.
Well, if you're here for the license, I need this question answered. So, you're not prepared to answer this question?
What, what do you want to know about the lease?
I'm asking if there is a lease for 714 Appleton Road?
Yeah, there's a lease.
And what does the lease indicate as far as the use of the property?
We rent from that property.
And the lease does not say that you are able to have an alcohol premise or premises, correct?
That's why we're trying to get the license for it. We could.
But the lease does not indicate that you are able to serve alcohol on the property, correct?
No, it doesn't say that you can't. If you get the permits, the required permits for it, you can.
No, the lease does not say that, does it?
The lease doesn't say that you can't have certain.
The lease tells you what you can use the property for, correct?
No.
Yes, it does. Would you like me to read it to you and maybe?
Sure.
Okay. A person needs to demonstrate that they have control over the property for the purpose of having a bar. And I don't see that in the lease, so that's why I'm asking these questions. And at first, you were telling me you don't know anything about it and now you're telling me that.
Yeah, because I don't know. Something different? I don't know how much they pay. I don't know how much, how long the lease is for. I don't know when they signed the lease. That's information, it's.
So, perhaps the owner should have been here, I guess. Actually, I'm looking for my. Yes. So, it says the premises to be used for retail sales and cellphone sales and others uses agreed by the landlord and tenant.
Tell us what it was there before. It was a cellphone store.
And is there a cellphone, cellphone store there now?
No.
And do you have something from the landlord to indicate that alcohol can be served on the premise?
No, I don't. But if that's what you guys need, I can get that.
Do we have anything that says it can?
The lease must indicate, they have to demonstrate proof. There's also reference to an exhibit number one and there is no exhibit that's attached. So, who is it that owns Superior Mobile?
Watt.
And is that the only owner?
Yep.
And how long has she owned that?
Three years.
Who owned it before then?
I did.
And how long did you own it?
For about five years.
And what did that business consist of?
Cellphones.
When you say cellphones, can you?
Yeah, we used to sell cellphones. We used to repair cellphones, sell the, people could pay their bill there.
And are there any employees?
No.
Does Kamel, and I don't know how to pronounce the last name. Khatib? Does he work there?
No. He did some work for me on the side, like to do paperwork, to run errands for me, extra stuff, but not at the actual store.
So, if I were to say that he was the only person that was there this past Friday when our. When the health sanitarium came in?
Yeah, but I don't own that place anymore. So, whatever he did at that location, that's not my.
The lease, I, I guess I'm kind of confused then. What location are you referring to?
714 Appleton Road.
And are there not multiple areas within 714? And how many spaces are there in there?
Two.
There's just two spaces? So, two different businesses?
Well, no, there's four. There's a.
Four? The one that you're renting, or the one, excuse me, that Superior Mobile is renting, how many spaces are in that?
It's one big space divided by, divided in two.
So, there are two separate businesses in there? And what are those two businesses?
One of them, it's the CBD. And the other one, it's, it's empty right now. We're trying to do the bar.
There was a previous application that was submitted to the city clerk, correct? For an alcohol license?
Oh, yeah.
And that one was withdrawn?
I believe so.
And that one was for the same location?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know who brought that application to the city clerk?
I believe Kamel did.
And that was Kamel Khatib?
Yep.
And do you, how do you know Kamel Khatib?
He is my ex-husband.
And is Kamel Khatib related at all to the owner of Superior Mobile?
Yep.
And what is that relationship?
It's his fiancee.
Was Kamel Khatib involved in the Superior Mobile business?
Yeah, he, like I said before, he used to do work for me.
What kind of a operation are you going, are you proposing at that location?
A bar.
And I, I have nothing further at this time. But I do have some questions that I would like to ask the chief and the city clerk about this license. There was a memo that was prepared and from the police department. Can you tell us about Kamel Khatib? And as it relates to a criminal record?
I can. We became aware of Mr. Khatib being involved in the business because we had reason to believe that he is the one who submitted the original application, which was withdrawn, representing himself as his wife. Lieutenant Maathie, at the time, who is since retired, ended up looking into the incident. And at the time that this had taken place, back in July of 2018, had determined that Mr. Khatib was both on probation federally as well as with the state of Wisconsin for various convictions that had taken place. In fact, at one point, the city clerk ended up trying to contact to get some clarification and a male party answered the phone. And I'm sure she can attest to what happened there, but that subject identified themselves as being Wahid, which we now found to be actually a female, not a male, who answered the phone. There are a 2014 conviction for possession with intent to deliver THC in the state of Wisconsin, 2012, two felony convictions for bail jumping, 2014, which were filed in 2014, 2013. 2014, we're showing a conviction for battery and then some traffic violations in 2017. He is no longer on the federal probation, so that has changed since Lieutenant Maathie's memo on July 31st of 2018. He is still on probation with the state of Wisconsin. I did contact his current probation agent and she indicated that it is the rules of the court that while he is on probation through, through 2022, that he is not allowed to be in any possession of alcohol, be it selling it, be it at his personal residence. And he had actually reached out to his agent yesterday requesting for that rule to be lifted. And the agent was unaware of the potential interest on Mr. Khatib's part to be participating in a bar at the location on Appleton Road. Not sure if that kind of answers your question. The federal conviction was.
Yeah, it was, I was going to ask, what was the date?
That one, I'd have to dig through the paperwork here. That was for probation for trying to sell firearms to an overseas nation. And that was investigated by the Federal Bureau of Investigations. I'm going to go to, I can dig through, it's.
Okay.
The paperwork is a little bit lengthy.
Okay. So, then if I could just ask the clerk a couple questions. Debbie, did you receive an application for alcohol license for the premises at 814, or excuse me, 714 Appleton Road?
Yes, I did.
And who was it that brought in the application?
It was a male person who presented the application to me, kind of under the pretense that he was the person listed on the application.
And why do you say that?
Because some of the questions I was asking him regarding the application, he was, he was answering like he was the person, the business owner, the person whose name was listed on that application.
And did you have contact with the owner of Superior Mobile?
The person who's listed on the application wed, I don't know how I pronounce her last name. I thought I was talking to that person back in August.
Of 2018?
Of 2018. And then I found out that the person I was talking to was a male and I found out through the police department that the person that they showed, it was a female. And I never talked to her until May of this year.
2019?
2019.
That was the first time you talked to her?
That, talked to her. I've had correspondence via email from her.
Okay. And did you have telephone calls at all with the owner of Superior Mobile?
Well, the person that I was talking to on the phone was a male. And it indicated that he was the person that was listed on the application. And I thought it was him that I was talking to.
You thought it was the owner?
I thought it was the owner, correct, yes.
And what led you to believe that he was the person representing the business?
He brought in the paperwork. I asked him for additional paperwork, the lease that's needed. He brought that in. I asked him what type of business was going to be done in there. He explained what type of business. He answered the questions like he was the person that was listed on the application. And I, when I talked to him on the telephone and was talking to him about some things, I referred to him as Wed, and he never corrected me.
And the first application, what kind of license was being requested?
The first, when it was first presented, they asked for a Class B beer and a Class C wine. When I explained that a Class C wine could only be issued if it was a restaurant, then they said, well, he said, maybe we won't go with that one.
Okay.
And then throughout the correspondence that I had via email, they would reference between a Class B beer and a Class C wine. And once again, I told them about not, the Class C wine needed to be a restaurant, that I could only issue to a restaurant. Then it was changed to a Class B beer again.
And what about the meeting that you had this year?
May 7th, staff, which consisted of people from community development, from the building inspectors, from the health department, the sanitarium, the fire department, and myself, sat down, and we had an interpreter on the phone, because that's what was asked for. And there were three people from, that represented Superior Mobile. One was Linda Contreras, one was Wed Alwashi, I hope I'm saying that. And then the other person, all he said his name was Kamel. He did not give a last name.
And what indication did you have at that meeting as to what kind of business was going to be operating at seven fourteen Appleton Road?
They talked about a vape lounge at the very beginning of their application, when they presented it. And then it was being changed to a lounge, a beer lounge. But then they also brought up that they might have a hookah bar, a hookah lounge. And then I was questioning that because we, the state does not allow us to issue a liquor license to where there's two businesses being operated in the same building. And that's how it all started, was they had a cell phone business. And then they said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna put up a wall, we're gonna separate. It'll be two separate businesses. Then they kept changing what was gonna go in there. And the last time was the hookah lounge, which the state does not allow, is not under the exception for a hookah lounge. And that I got from the Department of Revenue.
Do you have any response at all?
No, I do not. I mean, I got hired to do the bar there, and that's, that's where I take on, that's about it.
The statutes do require that we know what is going to be going on at the location in order to give a license. I can tell you that from what I've seen, I don't know that. I do know that some of the businesses, as an example, the CBD oil, the hookah lounge, those things cannot be run at the same location as a bar that has beer. That's against the statutes. It's not City of Manasha laws, those are state laws. It appears to me that the business does not know. It keeps changing. Nobody knows what's going on there. The application, the first application that came in, the clerk was convinced that the owner of the business, she later found out to be Kamel. Kamel has a felony record. It's not pardoned. And in fact, it's not supposed to be around alcohol. It appears to me that he would not qualify to run a bar at all, to have a license, and that it appears to me there's some kind of switcheroo or something. And I would recommend denying it just based on the things that I've heard here tonight. I haven't heard anything that's gonna convince me otherwise. The owner doesn't even show up. Did indicate she was gonna be here, isn't here to answer any questions. I don't, I guess, have anything further to add.
Alderman Savinck?
Thank you, Mayor. The city attorney made a comment that helped me with the abbreviations, HTC or what is it?
CBD?
CBD. You can't have that. And serve alcohol or have alcohol? And I forget the term you use because I see it being sold at convenience stores. So, and they're also selling alcohol and beer, and so what's, so it has, it's open intoxicants or something, or what?
There are different kinds of licenses. And so depending on the license that you have, that will determine what can and cannot be done. The state statutes indicate that you cannot have another business. They have a CBD oil business. You can't have a CBD oil business and then also have a bar. That is not allowed.
So just by having a, like, give me the initials again so I don't...
CBD?
C?
B.
D?
D.
Okay.
Correct.
So is it just because it's CBD?
No, you can't have a, yeah, you can't have an auto repair shop and then decide that you're gonna serve alcohol.
But you can serve food, but you can serve alcohol. That's what I'm saying.
This is the state statutes.
Okay, and then...
So, and thank you for...
There are other things that you sell in a bar. I mean, they're selling, let's say, T-shirts or whatever.
Correct. That's correct.
So correct me on my understanding of this.
Yes. So no Class B license or permit may be granted for any premises where any other business is conducted in connection with the premises. And then like a hotel is an exception, a restaurant, if you have a restaurant, whether or not it is part of or located in any mercantile establishment, a combination grocery store and tavern, a combination sporting goods store and taverns, combination novelty store and tavern, a bowling center or recreation premises, a movie theater, a painting studio. So there are some circumstances under which you can also hold a Class B license. This isn't one of them. This is not the primary reason for denial anyways. I mean, it's one of the, there are multiple reasons here. The primary in my mind is that we have somebody here who has felony convictions, who has been corresponding with the city clerk as if he's the owner, has making, has been indicating this is what the business is gonna do, or not do, or they're, you know, changing from one to the other.
Sorry, are you telling me right now?
Somebody needs to represent, the owner or the person who's the agent needs to represent that business, not a convicted felon who is not able to hold a license.
But if someone else came in that was not them, or whatever, that had a clean record, they could do that. My whole issue is this one more time. Let me just use a weird example. Sorry to use Jitters, but let's say Jitters wants to sell CBD. Can they do that?
Jitters is a bar.
Okay.
They sell, I'm thinking...
I don't care what else they sell. Can they sell CBD?
It is likely that they can, yes.
So then I don't understand this. I think this has nothing to do then with those things that you just brought up. They happen to do with the fact that you're saying they haven't been honest with the application, period.
No, I gave you about four, at least four different reasons.
Well, I've seen some of the other...
And so it's up to the common council to decide what it is that they want to...
I'm being the devil's advocate. I'm not arguing with you here. I'm just, just saying. Because the line of questioning that I saw right now, I'm not completely convinced. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, this, I'm not used to this. I think there's other underlying things. The, obviously, the police department's been involved. They're, they're feeling that it's not appropriate. I think probably what you should have done is never even mentioned the CBD, probably came in.
It was not anything. It was something that I asked what businesses are currently being run.
Okay.
And it was indicated that a current business that's being run at that location is CBD oil. That's it.
And so if, if they would have had the liquor license first and had just selling beer, and then they decided to sell the CBD, that'd be different? Is it because it's just a beer license, or is it an alcohol?
The common council has a right to know what businesses are being operated there.
Okay. I've never questioned any bar in this community.
We have never had a question about that.
Or selling or anything. So why is this one so unique? Because it's the first time? Or what, I'm...
No. That's up to you. I just presented.
Well, if I'm here representing the bar, and I'm the one that's the manager that's gonna be taking care of this, and my record is completely clean, why am I getting denied for something that happened on the outside?
Are you applying for it, or is this other lady applying for it?
Well, she's the owner of the business. No, I'm gonna, I'm the agent.
There's your answer. You need to be the owner in order to apply for that license.
For the beer license?
The agent, the agent or the owner can represent the, the bar.
I don't know. That's what I was saying. If she's, if she's the one that's applying, why are we denying it? Because we thought someone was doing something wrong? Okay. Debbie said there's two names on there. You're just, you're one, you're just the agent. So that was the problem.
So the only problem is that what didn't come up here? Because that would be the only other name on there, the owner and myself. So you mean to tell me that if one were to came here, I would have been approved?
It's the common council who decides whether they are going to accept or deny. There have been recommendations that were provided to you. There have been statements and things that have been provided to you. And it is you who decides whether or not you wish to allow the license.
Do you have anything else to?
I'm just, I, I'm not happy with the way this was handled, period.
Alderman Kruger? Thank you, Mayor. The, this is really convoluted. I mean, it's, it's a... No, in the beginning, you mentioned that the owner was supposed to show up, and we were gonna provide an interpreter. Did I hear that right? Or she asked for one? So the city did go ahead and arrange an interpreter?
Yes.
And the interpreter showed up then?
He was sitting.
He was, okay. You, do you see anything at all wrong with this whole scenario?
Well, of course, in the beginning, there was a lot of misunderstanding. I mean...
Well, there would have been not a misunderstanding, but having someone apply for a license that was misrepresenting who that person was and acting like he, do you, do you see anything wrong with that?
I see what you're saying, but he's the fiancee of what, so, and she doesn't speak fluent English. So I would, and, and I'm Hispanic. I see this scenario all the time where the husband or the fiancee is representing her, or vice versa, because they don't, they can't speak it. So this scenario happens a lot, because I'm Hispanic. I see this all the time. You might not see it that way, because you didn't have to have this problem.
Well, it, it's a problem, because I mean, there's procedures and laws that have to be followed. I mean, I cannot represent my wife on an application like this. And if, if the, if the owner wanted this business that bad, she, number one, she would have showed up here to begin with, and actually made the effort, and even came up to City Hall with her fiancee, husband, or whoever it is, and have the, you know, not, not just having someone show up, give no indication that the person is not who is on that application, and the city clerk thinks that it's...
I mean, I see where you're coming from, but...
This is, this is messed up. I'm sorry. This is messed up.
And we're talking to the people that are actually on the application this evening, sir. So Linda would be the only one that would be here this evening. So do we have any other discussion, Alderman Nichols? And my screen isn't...
Thank you, Mayor. Besides looking at the application, we do have a memorandum in our packet from the city clerk who has been with this application from its onset. And so the people who are watching tonight understand why we're having this conversation. I'd just like to read a little bit from that memo. It says during the investigations, it was discovered that the applicant provided inaccurate or false statements. Also, proper inspections were, proper inspections were unable to be done as the applicant had not been clear on what type of business is being currently conducted or will be conducted at seven fourteen Appleton Road. Section seven two nine A of our municipal code requires, in determining the suitability of an applicant, consideration shall be given to the moral character and financial responsibility of the applicant, the appropriateness of the location, and the premises proposed, and generally that the applicant's fitness, and generally the applicant's fitness for the trust to be reposed. And as the attorney stated, that the common council has a right to know what is being currently operated and proposed at that location. I believe the community has a right to know as well. And we have a responsibility to the community to know what will be happening at that address.
Thank you. I mean, I don't think they were, I don't think at any point they didn't say what kind of business they were, they were applying for a license to serve beer. That's what we're approving tonight. My, my personal feeling that I have in the back of my mind here is that there was... mind here is that there was some type of miscommunication and that one individual thought that he had the right to do what he did because someone didn't speak fluent English. But it is the recommendation of practically everybody here at the city that works for the city, from the police department, community development, the city clerk, the city attorney, that that the applicant misled staff, they strongly feel that way. I'm seeing it a little bit differently. But they feel very strongly about that. And that the information that was provided on the application has not been forthcoming on the type of business that will be conducted. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the application for Superior Mobile LLC.
Sir, any?
Thank you, Mayor, just one thing, so the viewers understand, Attorney Captain, has the city engaged an interpretator, an interpreter in the process before it came to counsel?
Yes.
And a, and an interpreter was invited here this evening and was present?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, seeing no further discussion, we do have a motion on the floor. The motion is to deny the class B liquor license. If we have no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Sir, we, you would've had, you had your chance at the beginning of the meeting for the public to speak?
Yeah, I didn't know, because my name's the only one that's on the report that matters, so I thought I'd be invited because of my name's on there. The felon's the bad guy, the guy that did everything wrong.
And you'll have a chance to speak at the end of the meeting too, if you wish?
Motion carried out, roll call eight zero.
Item seven. Is Broad Street Terrace Trees, Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to make a motion to remove five thousand dollars from the storm water street construction budget for the purpose of providing city terrace trees on the three and four hundred block of Broad Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a motion of second, is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, James?
Mr. Mayor, the project is, will be completely done tomorrow. All contractors did an excellent job. Especially for the complete reconstruction. The neighborhood last year went through complete construction of water lines, sewer lines, sanitary lines. And the street was left in pretty bad condition. The street was first put on the budget to have done back in the nineteen nineties. It got pushed back, pushed back. When my brother was on the council in two thousand ten. It came back on the docket to have done. That was nine years ago. We waited seven years for the federal grant, which I believe was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for this year to use that federal dollars. So, that was a blessing for the city to have that type of money. And we have an opportunity here, as the street opens tomorrow. They're striping it as we have this meeting and doing some landscaping. It would be an opportunity here to showcase the three, four hundred block of Broad Street, which is on the Friendship Trail. And, which has been in really bad condition for many years. We've had favorable weather this year. The current season is two and three weeks behind. And same project was last year, we had Main Street. Started April first, Broad Street started April first, Main Street ended on June eighth. This project ends on June fifteenth. So, we replaced all the trees on Main Street last year at this time too. So, if you'd like to move forward. The neighbor, neighborhood would like to move forward with these trees. And put the part, project to rest and showcase Manisha in a very positive manner by having these terrace trees, thank you.
Alderman Krueger?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh yeah, I'm, I take this one step at a time. First of all, Director Rad, Radofsky. Did I say doctor? Trees are scheduled to be placed on the Broad Street, are they not?
They, they are scheduled to be replaced next spring, it is our general procedure to replace any trees along street projects the following spring after construction is complete.
Okay, and I, we, we already purchased all the trees and, and Broad Street trees were going to be for next year's budget. We already bought all the trees that we were gonna buy in bulk to begin with, correct?
That is correct.
And, and what was the cost of per tree when we bought in bulk, do you, do you know that number?
I think it's around that hundred dollar figure, ninety, two hundred dollars.
Okay, okay. Is there any dire need to hurry up and plant trees? Cause my understanding is you, you plant the trees in early spring, later fall, when it's dormant. And I, I mean, there's some of the Main Street trees that are dead. They're not doing well either, and I know, when we, when we did the Friendship Trail, we planted all the stuff over there. Everything died on the Friendship Trail, and I remember Alderman up here chewing out public works for planting out of season. And wasting money on planting and, and and, and we've also had arguments and discussions, strong discussions about using the Stormwater funds for stuff that normally we wouldn't be using it for, I mean, I don't see an urgency in this, it's scheduled to be done in spring. Like every other normal residential street is. It's not like it's being neglected or anything, I just don't see the need to sit there and hurry up and take money out of Stormwater. And put it into trees for Broad Street. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
Just, just to be fair for what's going on here, typically our new trees are purchased out of the Stormwater Fund, and the trees that are cut down are taken out with the general fund. Just so everyone's clear of where those funds typically come from. Whether your opinion is to do it this year or not, isn't so much the question is with that though. Alderman Sevigny?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is that this isn't some new fund, this is where they come out of, regardless. From what I understand is that it's not spring until Friday, and, or summer until Friday, so we're still in spring. And we are about two weeks behind. I mean, there's no doubt, we are behind. And my thing though is whether we plant them in spring or fall, people have to water them. And just to give you a perfect example, James's brother watered his trees, his neighbor did not, they're twice the size. I mean, that's incredible, the difference when someone waters the tree. If some of them died on Main Street, then that was our fault for not watering them, we need to water them. And you and I talked about that, that, that's an important thing that has to be done. The reason I second this motion, James asked if I would, but the other reason is, is this has been such a long project. This has been going on for as long as I can remember. And the only difference is, is how it was gonna eventually be funded. So, the planning of the planting of the trees should have been taken place this spring, in my opinion, they should've been put in this spring. And it's still spring, like I said. If they have to, plant them in the fall, but don't plant them in November, that's the problem here. I've, I have issues when we start planting stuff in November. I mean, you can have even October cold, you know, so I've seen it where Mark Ratkey planted grass in November, he got lucky and it grew on Midway Road, but boy, I'll tell ya, I was, was not happy about that. So, this is, the Stormwater Fund, it, when, when we pay into that, that's what this is budgeted for, I mean, if we feel that that tree shouldn't come out of there, well then maybe we'll start looking at some other things, a lot of other things come out of their salaries for number one. So, I, I think it's okay, it, we're talking about trees. We're not talking about doing a major construction or something here, let's just plant some trees. Uh, the, the neighborhood over there waited long enough, it's time to finish up this project, it's been forever for them.
Alderman Grady?
I did speak with, thank you, Mayor. Dr. Geringer, who is, I consider the second arborist in the city. He's done a lot of donations with trees, in fact, I think he probably did sixty-some trees for the city this year. And he strongly believes that the window to plant trees now is over. And that we should wait until next spring to get them. I mean, we're gonna be putting a stick in, and there's not gonna be any shade provided by what we put in now. I think we wish, we really should wait till the opportune time to plant, and I think we've missed that window. And that's what a lot of people agree with. Even the city arborists, the specialists that we hire, tell us that. And I don't think fall is a good time to plant either.
Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Boy, what issues. Main Street, according, I was not on the council at that point, but Main Street was done, I believe, June eighth, and you guys put the, put the trees in on, for Main Street, the same year it finished, I believe. And now James's street, Broad Street is finished a week later in calendar year than what Main Street was, June eighth to June fifteenth. I mean, he's a week late, so I know it's, ideal planting time should've been in April, early May. But they did put the, they did do the Main Street trees. Maybe at an opportune time. But James wants that same favor for his Broad Street. And fall goes till, I'm trying to remember the calendar years, but doesn't fall go till like middle of December anyway? So, I mean, right, yes. Right, so.
Wintering road construction.
Yes, so, I, I guess, in fairness, have the trees been purchased, Josh? Could you? So, they have not been purchased? Okay, so they haven't, so in other words, even if we wanted to put the trees in, they, they weren't purchased anyway to be put in this year? Okay, so, and so that was a poor, or that, that was just maybe poor planning that we didn't purchase the trees earlier knowing that Broad Street would be done June fifteenth? Is that correct?
Again, it's generally our procedure to plant new, uh, trees in spring of the following years. Uh, we've done that for most of our residential streets, we'll be doing that for the Pond subdivision, we'll be doing that for Province Terrace, we'll be doing that for Willow Street. Uh, we'll be doing that for any of our other street projects this year. So, our general procedure is to plant the following spring. We did treat Main Street differently last year because it is our main commercial corridor on Main Street. There is a difference between Main Street and a residential street. It, it is still a street, however, it is a different business district, it, it is a different feel that you want to provide. You know, so that is why we did do that last year.
Hold on.
Street, thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Main Street and Broad Street are two different streets. Totally not even the same. That's how I look at it. They don't even compare. I talked to two arborists today. And I bet you not one of you know where one is, I went to Hortonville. And then I stopped at Stein's on the way back. And the guy in Hortonville said the same thing, and the same, the guy at Stein's said the same thing. That if we wanted to plant trees, we need to do it today. Because it's gonna rain tomorrow and Wednesday. And if we don't get them in today, they both said, it's not good. Even planting them in the fall, they said, they both said they probably won't make it. They'll come up dead next spring. So, they both said, springtime is the best. The problem I'm having also with this issue is, Josh, if, if we put those trees in this year and they die, what happens?
We do not have any warranty on any of the trees, so we would have to replace them at city cost.
City cost. So, that means if the residents on the three hundred and four hundred block do not water and take care of their tree, and it dies, taxpayers have to fund for them to get another tree.
That is correct.
So, with all that being said, and the homework that I've done, I'll be voting against this. And I also think, and the, talk about the trees on Main Street, that was already budgeted. That was put in the budget when we work on the budget. These, these weren't put in the budget. So, they're not even ordered. So, by the time we get the trees, Josh, what are we looking into, June? Could be.
Could be, could be a week, ten days.
So, we're going to end of June, into July, hot weather, August. So, we're gonna bank on every resident, how many trees? Fifty residents, we're gonna bank on that they're gonna take care of those trees and water them every day. And that's something that I can't have my taxpayers paying. That if they don't take care of the trees, they're gonna be up here saying, we want another tree, or they'll be calling Brian, I want another tree. So, I'll be voting against this, that the trees should be going in next spring.
Alderman Taylor?
I met with Adam Alex on site, I met with the, our arborist, Alex. And there's a die-off, no matter what trees we plant. There's about a ten to twenty percent die-off. I think the people on Main Street and the people on Broad Street have the same tax dollars. There shouldn't be any difference. The street, the planting on Main Street came out of the Stormwater budget, just as these trees are coming out of the Stormwater budget. Tonight, my neighbor boy was here, and he's doing a community project for scouting, that's what he was here tonight for. And that was his father that spoke in favor. And there are new residents to Manisha, they moved here from Appleton in January. And I've been looking at a different types of barrels for my truck. With a hose on it. Alderman Sevigny and I have a tremendous past with the city. Tremendous past with the city on our volunteering. And I was gonna take those trees under my wing on these two blocks with a tank on my truck and water these, these trees. And we wanted to showcase Manisha with our new Main Street last year. And here's an opportunity with the Friendship Trail completely open, last year, our street was closed to the Friendship Trail. It's back open again now, and here's an opportunity to make Manisha look nice. And it comes, all the trees come out of this Stormwater Fund, we're not doing anything different here. And we all know that we're in a different season this year. And these trees, the landscapers finishing up tonight too, he said these trees could've been put in before Memorial Day. So, and this project's been on the docket since the nineties and since two thousand ten. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, last year, when you planted the trees downtown, did they include the nine that are running along the parking ramp on Broad Street? There are trees planted there right now? When did those go in? Was that part of them, did that go with the Main Street plan, those trees? There's nine of them. I think three are dead and the rest are partially alive? That's a whole strip of trees on Broad Street that didn't make it?
I'm not sure when those along there.
Yeah, those were not with Main Street.
Oh, okay. I'm just, timing, I'm just thinking when, why those are all leaving.
And I did ask, I did ask the arborists about that as well, because it's rather strange that they were beautiful last year, and now all of a sudden, they're all dead. So, I'm not sure what happened there.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you Mayor. Question about the trees. The trees on Main Street that we planted, are they gonna, is that the same size as the trees that we're gonna plant down Broad Street?
Is that on? Normally, we're about an inch and a quarter, inch and a half diameter tree. Some of the ones I've seen, the ginkgo trees downtown, are maybe a little smaller than what we would probably do on Broad Street.
I commend Alderman Taylor for his planning to water these trees with the barrel and do that stuff. Do you guarantee that these trees with your watering will survive? And if they don't, will you be paying to replace them, or will the city?
It might gone. As I stated before, our arborist said, there's a twenty percent failure on all our trees. So, I didn't see you guys the last ten years up here, go out every year and go after that neighborhood, and go after that homeowner that might not have watered. So, you're treating this with a whole different swath here. But as a citizen, that I love my community, and I would take the time to water these, providing the city provides the water. They have a hose out at the city garage there that I think we could fill the container on. But I know we make the big bucks up here, and I don't think I should be responsible for the trees if they die, as twenty percent of them do each year. And as the Main Street project was, the same as this project. So, we're asking, showcase Manasha, make Manasha look beautiful. We got an opportunity. We got an opportunity with Mother Nature right now. We got an opportunity that these trees should've been in three weeks ago. So, you can make the neighbors wait till a year from now, but we could showcase our city and make it look good.
No, I wasn't, you know, insinuating that you'd have to pay for them. I like the idea that, and that you do have to water them, and I think that's pretty admirable for you to step up to do that. But it sounded like this project started like, ten years ago, or I don't know how long it's with what you're saying. So, you know, with timelines and everything, why not wait a couple more months for the spring and then plant the trees there?
We're gonna go around and around and around, huh?
Yeah, let's just finish this.
Well, I just, I just have two quick questions for Brian, if Brian, you still got the mic, just for, so that our community knows. And that is, we are a tree city, and we've been recognized for that. And how many years has it been? It's been thirty-plus years?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight years. Very few communities can say that. So, I'm not, I'm not debating. I just wanted the public to know here. So, that's something we can be proud of, and I think Alderman Taylor kind of takes that to heart. He's proud of his street, his neighborhood, and that corridor that is the length with the Loop de Lake. And so, and the Friendship Trail, so.
I gotta go to bathroom.
Also, too, we also have a districts that we do these, our tree program. What district is being done for next year? What's being planned, maybe?
Do you have the budget, John?
I believe that this year it was District Three and Four, wasn't it? Or that was last year? So, yeah, I think it was District Five and Six, right? So, then yours will be next time. I was just wondering when Alderman Taylor's district would be next. Well, we'll continue the conversation, and you can get back.
Yeah, it was Three and Four this year, and yeah, Five and Six, I believe, would be next year.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Mayor. James, I appreciate your love for your street. They don't have the trees ordered. It wasn't in the budget, maybe not great planning, who knows, to give Broad Street the same, same love that they gave Main Street. But I understand if the trees got ordered, right now, they're not gonna be planted as fast as we'd like them to plant. So, they're not gonna be planted till sometime early July. Even if we'd get them in early July, is not a good time to plant the trees. And so, I'm hoping that we can plant these trees. They have to be in the ground by middle of May next year, and that needs to be done. So, that way, it should guarantee the best possible survival rate, and hold the city to it that they need to have it scheduled by May 15th, and get them done. Not get wishy-washy. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
At first, I was told our street projects end in August, okay? Last year, Main Street did not end in August. We had a fifty-day window on this project. We had a fifty-day window on this project, as of June 15th. We had a window last year of June 8th. We both projects met that window. And with the eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollar grant we got from the federal government, some of this should've been thought ahead of time, that we could've, that we could've had these trees planted before Memorial Day. We have a wonderful opportunity this year. I had lilacs on Memorial Weekend. I usually have them on Mother's Day. So, we are two to three weeks behind on the project. And all we're trying to do, it's not about James, it's not about the Broad Street people. We're just trying to make Manasha look nice. And that's what these trees do. It's a beautiful project. It's done. We're not happy with the width of our street, but that's the way it has to be. And it's a beautiful project. And all the construction people really were sensitive to the neighbors on this project, and just thought we'd have a topping off party. And that's all we're trying to do is make Manasha look nice.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to call a question.
Seeing no further discussion, we, I forgot what the motion was way back when. Okay, relocate from Stormwater and plant the trees this year. So, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion feels on roll call two six.
Item eight is an offer to purchase 140 Main Street. We do have Mr. Fisk, who is the representative in the audience this evening, if anyone has questions for him, or? Did you want Mr. Schrader to first explain what the offer is, and, or Mr. Fisk? Why don't we have Mr. Schrader tell us what the proposal is? And then if people would like to go into closed session, we can do that. Alderman Nichols, yeah?
In the interest of what's left on the agenda and the people in the gallery, once that, once Director Schrader has finished, and everything else has finished, would it be all right if we moved on with ordinance resolutions and appointments and public comments, and then go back to a closed session? Does that make sense?
I mean, I guess we're gonna have people waiting either way.
Well, I think there's someone in the gallery who's not with the developers group, though, and so we can move through the rest.
If you, you would like to move forward on the other items first, is what you're saying?
Sure. Thank you.
Well, the item K, the ordinance, I would assume that we want to postpone that, since we postponed the other. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you Mayor. I'll move that we refer back to Plan Commission O-12-19 and ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district. And this is in regards to 528 Milwaukee Street.
So, the motion was to refer to Plan Commission. There's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item two is Resolution 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve R-17-19, intergovernmental agreement to satisfy eligibility for recycling consolidation grant for the calendar year of 2020, introduced by Alderman Kruger, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion. A second. Is there discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. I'm saving you on roll calls. Item L is appointments. Alderman Sevenek.
I'm gonna take them separate because there's different dates. So, I'll move for the reappointment of Ray Zalinski to the Board of Review for a term of 7-1 2019 through 7-1 2023.
There's a motion. A second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item two, oh, turn off your light stand. You should've just kept going.
Thank you Mayor. If I would've, you would've said, you got some questions?
I would've, you're right.
I'll move for the reappointment of Tom Stoffel to the Board of Review for a term of 7-1 2019 to 7-1 2024.
There's a motion. A second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to item N, public comments and any matter that was listed on the agenda. Now you would have your opportunity.
So, how you doing? My name is Kamel Khatib. There's a lot of lies going on here. I just wanna speak because, you know, I am the star of the show. I was listed as the number one contestant. I wanna at least have the five minutes to defend myself. Not that it matters, because this was already done and it's completely fraudulent. The first thing is false and inaccurate information. You have to lie or say something false in order for it to be false. I didn't. She assumed. It's her fault. Shouldn't try to put the blame on people that are completing work or tasks for anybody else. I'm a business manager, so I can work. Sorry. Bring my energy down. So, I can work for anybody I want, and I can do their paperwork and file their corporations. And if I'm authorized, I can sign on their behalf. That's called business management, but I don't know if anybody knows that here. And then, we're gonna go to the cops. They wanna say that I was indicted in 2012 for unlawfully receiving a firearm while under indictment, then re-indicted, then re-indicted, then re-indicted, four indictments to pin me once. So, that was a frivolous case, but it's cool. I reserved the time. I redid the bid. I was also awarded by the feds a Medal of Honor because I was one of the best students in their class. So, we'll put that on my resume too, since I'm a bad guy. So, damn, man, my energy's so high. I need to bring it down. Okay, it's anxiety. Got mental health issues. So, then we're gonna talk about, we changed so many times. I'm putting these applications in. I'm dropping all the stuff. It's my job. That's what I do. Every time they give us a curveball, we find a solution. We change. If we can't be vape, we're gonna be a cafe. If we can't be a cafe, we're gonna be a bar. If we can't be a bar, we're gonna be a CBD store. That's how we change it around. Sorry if I'm full of energy, but then the last note, she lied and she lied. The state approved everything. The ATF approved everything. They told us how to put our business. They told us that if we build a door here and a door here, you can have two different businesses. And that's what we did. They told us that the CBD store over here, it's not in the bar, so it's not dual businesses. It's two separate businesses, like Family Dollar and like the salon on the other side. Misinformation and lies is blamed. This whole discriminatory factor on my wife, my ex-wife, and my soon-to-be-wife. My soon-to-be-wife's at home breastfeeding, because we breastfeed our kid, so she couldn't make it to the meeting, so she didn't have time to call anybody. So, she just told me to go, because I represent the business and I'm a significant other. My ex-wife who was here, who was applying as the agent, as per conditions, you know, when the owner's not gonna be around, man, I'm so sarcastic. Let me bring it down. So, when the owner's not gonna be around, an agent is appointed. An agent represents the company. An agent was hired, two different ones. The first one we got rid of, because he didn't speak English either. We didn't want no more curveballs, so we got a Spanish-speaking one that spoke English. So, she jumped on board. Now, my family's owned this business for seven years. We've been in Manasha for seven years. We pay taxes and bills and all your sewage taxes that we pay so you can plant trees. We pay that. That's Superior Mobile. Superior Mobile was a cell phone store, and is in a complex full of other businesses, okay? So, let's have all our facts straight when we start voting. And the council has all this power to sit here and dictate stuff when they don't even give you the due process clause protected by the Bill of Rights. I have a right for any governmental intrusion into my life from my Bill of Rights. It's my constitutional rights, state and federal, to challenge any governmental intrusion. The mayor wouldn't let me talk when I was the talk of the show. Well, Kamel, he's a felon, and he's convicted. Well, Kamel this, Kamel that. You didn't ask her nothing about her, though. It didn't matter what she said. And you're worried about the lease and whatnot, the lease. Well, call the landlord and tell him what do you want him to do? Because we have an agreement, oral agreement with the landlord that says, hey, you wanna do a cafe, do it. You wanna do a bar, do it. Whatever you wanna do, do it. As a matter of fact, bring it down, bring it down. Dave Hildebrand, who is our landlord, has spoke on our behalf, has come down to the city on our behalf, has even questioned the competency of the office on our behalf. Because this is clear discrimination. They called us into a meeting because they didn't know who Wad is. Who's Wad? We can't even say her name. They bring us into a meeting. We bring our baby, who needed to be breastfed, but we couldn't feed him because Wad had to be present. I pronounce my name Kamel al-Khatib. You should get the records and actually hear it in Arabic, because I was talking to the interpreter, because that's how I introduced myself. She didn't hear that. So, what did she say? Oh, he introduced Salma's Kamel. Well, you don't know Arabic, so you didn't hear Kamel al-Khatib. That's another false statement, misinformation. We sat with all these guys, the community development, the fire inspector, health inspector, all these different positions. They didn't have a problem then. Why you got a problem now? You're discriminating. All of this is about me. The whole report, the police guy, he can't even do his job right. He retired. This is from a year ago. When you do a background check on a new application for 2019, you should do one for 2019. You should've put my name off of this list. But no, 2017, this guy, he comes in, he drop off the application, and now we got him on camera. Let's call his PO. I've been in the community for over three years. I've excelled. I passed my federal probation. I did a great job there. Got a medal for it. And you can call the feds anytime you want. As a matter of fact, I got Jim's number for when he does come to help me out with this problem. Second thing is I've been on a state probation as well. I completed the first one. I'm on my second last part, and I'm on minimum. I'm doing good. Haven't had any problems, never been arrested, except that one discriminatory time three years ago. I haven't been in any violations. You don't care about those facts, though. You don't care that a felon can go to prison and come out and do something good. You'd rather have me go do illegal stuff, so that guy can come and harass me on some frivolous stuff, than go sit here and work with my wife and my ex-wife. The craziest thing ever to testify for my character is my ex-wife was on here tonight with my wife, with my new wife. If I can get along with them, why can't I get along with you guys? This is ridiculous. The most outrageous council. I mean, I'm just- This is ridiculous. The most outrageous council. I mean, I'm just, I'm dumbfounded. The Bill of Rights guarantees me my right to pursue happiness, felon or non-felon. It suspends some privileges. I can't vote. I can't run for mayor, or I would've ran for mayor. But that's what happens when you're a felon. Okay, it's over. But I still have a right to pursue happiness. I have a right to community develop anything I want in the community, especially when we're paying taxes. Our family's paying taxes. We've been here for seven years. You guys don't care about that. Oh, well, you don't know what's on the lease because the lease been changed 45 times. You don't know what business you wanna do. You're just throwing stuff out there. Let's get some facts on the record. The prosecutor over here, she just grilled her. Talking to somebody who's never been to court grilled her. It wasn't the mayor to ask. It wasn't you Ted to ask. It wasn't any of you. You let the DA grill her, and then she's sitting here going off on Stan because Stan is like, "This doesn't make sense." She's like, "Well, the council will decide." Well, we saw that. It's all, hopefully, what the world can see this. Well, I gotta get out of here because, you know, I don't know how to talk because I'm really just like excited. It's not nothing bad, just excited and gonna have a cigarette and relax. Now, we did have a chance to sit down with community development. They didn't say nothing done. The state ATF and the state, and then the false SAFE bill that you guys use as your third-party general inspectors that don't know how to act, they all didn't say nothing done. The Fire Marshal loved it. Vernon, he was like, "Oh, what? A hookah? What is that?" "Oh, is there a fire?" Didn't understand the new innovations because you guys don't even pay attention. So your SAFE bill is the one that told us this, 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 and this, and this, and this. And we spent $35,000 because of Debbie because she didn't know what she was doing. She's telling us, "Oh, well, I can't take this to the council and give you an answer now. Spend $35,000 and then come back, and then we'll deny you." I told her straight up, "You could've just denied us then. We don't need to go through all this $35,000 later." The state inspector came in and told me, because I'm the project manager, and I'm handsome, so I'm always there. He told me, "You didn't need this door. You need, you didn't need that door. You didn't need any of this. Why are you doing this?" I told him, "Because SAFE Bill, who's hired by the city of Manasha, told us that we need to do it." That's two separate businesses. As per what we were requested, we did everything you guys asked. We followed all the rules. We did all, every, every code that we could possibly do. Okay, we did everything you guys wanted. And the last thing is that a police report from a year ago, not even an updated police report, is sitting here submitted, and this guy, this mayor, he doesn't even let me talk. He thinks I'm being rude because I wanna talk, but you're talking about me. This is, I gotta get out of here. All right. So thank you very much. Enjoy the show. Hope this goes live. Good night. We don't even care about her. Oh, I didn't, but I'll pick it up after whoever was dropped. All right, thanks. You guys have a good night.
Okay, we will move back to the purchase of 140 Main. Director Schrader?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe, I have not seen him. I believe Grant Fisk is still here. All right. So in front of us today is a, an actual offer to purchase of our formal City Hall building, 140 Main Street, just on the street. We had declared that, that property as surplus back in 2017 after moving into this facility in June of 2017. So in that time, it has been listed. And the offer in front of us today, official offer to purchase, is for the amount of $100,000. Staff did work with Grant Fisk and as well to kind of bring forward some of the concerns that were brought forward. The previous time, there was a lot of intent, as well as previous proposals of purchase. And included in the addendum A is some items such as the additional proposed land use, possible investment, and value of the building, potential increase, as well as added additional contingencies such as the, being able to financial, provide a financial commitment. The buyer agrees to pay 100% of the closing cost. The intention will not become tax exempt. Added in there, the similar language that we have previously approved, that should've become tax exempt, the buyer would negotiate a pilot payment with the city. The buyer understands the mural wall is located in the city right away and shall be maintained and owned by the city of Manasha. Again, that was a large conversation when we were looking at putting that building up for disposition was considering, considering how that mural wall would, would move forward and how that would affect a separate business owner. So the seller shall approve the assignment of the settlement on lease. The closing shall take place, no honor before August 9th. Substantial completion of the exterior building improvements are completed by the end of this year, December 31st of 2019. And substantial completion of internal building improvements and occupants shall, are intended prior to 29, or December 31st of 2020. So again, the following year, their intention is to redo the entire front facade, put a first-floor tenant in there or potentially two tenants to have more of a downtown feel, again, to connect that downtown with us, our historic downtown to the east. Again, Grant Fisk is here, and he can provide a little more presentation as far as his background. I know some of the concerns last time was who's, who's he partnering with, things of that nature. So he has listed some of his partners on this, on this addendum, as well as, I think, as you will see, their, their team is excited and eager to work with Manasha and starting with hopefully 140 Main Street and moving forward from that aspect. I will leave it at that and...
Did the council wish to hear from Mr. Fisk?
Yes, something to say. I would, I'd keep you step up, and then I think we have to go on close. Some of us might have questions now, too.
Well, and that's what I'm mostly here for. It's, okay, is it the red light on? Yeah, red light means on. Okay.
You're the first person, though, that it hasn't been above their head.
Is that better? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for taking the time. I'm mostly here to answer questions. This is, we're trying to keep this as simple and straightforward as possible. We want this to be a very simple transaction. We wanna make it, you know, best for the city, easiest for the city. And the goal is to really take what Manasha has done showcasing the eastern half of downtown and start to continue that all the way to the west and eventually take that all the way down to Little Lake Buttermore. Kind of start to redevelop that, that, you know, the 140 Main Street, and eventually kind of keep going, take advantage of the opportunity zone that's, that's in front of you and really kind of do something fantastic to showcase downtown Manasha. It is a very unique community. There are not many communities in the entire United States that have an urban waterway with the marina that connects two navigable bodies of water, the sides of Lake Nubago and Little Lake Buttermore. It is a unicorn downtown in the United States, not just the upper Midwest, in the United States. Because it is such a unique opportunity and a unique piece of property, it is starting to attract attention. As you saw, the partners that I'm bringing in are from New York and Miami and Colorado. These are big-time developers who have, for a very long time, have just treated, treated Wisconsin and the upper Midwest as flyover country. But having presented them this opportunity, this very unique downtown, they realize there is something here that is worth showcasing, that we should be invested in and should be showcased to the entire United States. It isn't just flyover country anymore. This is something special. And people from big development companies, from New York, from Los Angeles, from Miami, now realize, oh, this is something to show off, and this is something to be involved with. And they look at 140 Main Street as kind of the beginnings of this relationship. This is not going to be a one-and-done. They want to start with this and keep going and bring, bring more development to downtown, invest real money into downtown, and really showcase this community. It is the heart of the Fox Valley and should be presented as such. And that is our goal.
If anyone has questions for Mr. Fisk right now, or?
Sorry, Randy. Anyways, this is the way I look at it. This is a unique building. It overlooks a marina. It's in a downtown area. It's also a growing corporate downtown that's starting to... One time, we had a major Fortune 500 company named Bonta Company down here. But that building, you know, obviously, you know its issues and that. And thing is, though, is that the public is gonna look at this and think that we gave it away if we accept this price. I've already heard that. My, my feeling is, is that we have to do a job of indicating the taxes that we can get from that building. So if you're gonna put 700, 800,000, I expect that the building be assessed at 700, 800,000.
And that is our expectation.
Taxes on that. So that's number one for me. It's use. Now, it's kind of hidden in there, but it kind of mentions like, like residential, basically. And I mean, if that's the intent, just tell us that's where you're going, you know? I've heard things through the grapevine, too, of some of the other possibilities you've, are looking at in this community. So I've also been, and the mayor's been involved, with someone that has also been interested in that building and the other building. And changing the whole landscape as a, but they never really stepped forward like you are doing today. So we don't have any other folks biting here. If, I mean, if this is the first step and you can prove yourself, then it gets a lot easier for you down the line, too.
And that's all we want, is the opportunity to prove ourselves. And that's why we're coming forward to, we want to, we're coming forward with a quick close. We don't want this to sit out there for 180 days while we're thinking about it. We're looking to close within seven weeks, I think, give or take from today. The cash is ready to spend. We want to get this back on the tax roll. It's been sitting empty for two years, and I don't recall how many years City Hall was in there, but it hasn't been paying property taxes in how many years?
More than a dozen.
And the goal is to get it back on the tax roll as quickly as possible. We don't want to be a nonprofit. We're, this, we're looking at this to be the beginnings of a long-term partnership with the city. That's what we want to do. We don't want to come here, and I'm from here. I'm from Nina and Manasha. This has been my home for literally decades.
That's good to hear.
This is important to me. Really showcasing this is important, making sure, you know, Nina, Manasha, Appleton, this whole community remains as viable as possible. You said once upon a time, there was a Fortune 500 company here in downtown. There's no reason we can't bring one back at some point. And you're, and you do that by investing and redeveloping and bringing new opportunities to downtown. We did list in there that, yeah, residential could be an option. It isn't our primary option. However, someday, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, when we're all done and retired, and there's the next group looking to do something, we want to make sure they have, they have the option to do something like that. As needs change, as generations change, urban, you know, urban living is becoming very important. So it might not be the use now, but it could be the use 10 years from now or 15 years from now. It's an interesting building in that it's unique. It's something you don't see. We don't want to tear it down. We don't want it to be just another empty field, sitting vacant, while someone tries to figure out something else to do with it. We want to take advantage of an interesting building that's already standing, and we can do that very quickly. We don't want to, again, buy it and then wait and think about doing something. We're going to change the facade. We want, we're going to wrap around kind of the look of the mural wall, those colors, that brick is gonna be wrapped around to the front of the building. That's gonna be done immediately. Earlier today, I was meeting in front of the building with the contractor that we're bringing on to start those plans going. We want to move forward, and we want to move forward very quickly. There, as you mentioned, we are looking at other projects. We are looking at other sites. But it all needs to start somewhere, and 140 Main Street is where we'd like to start. And we want to start moving very quickly. We want to get this building on the tax roll as soon as possible.
Yep, so do we.
Thank you, Mayor. Grant, I appreciate your efforts to help our city. You said that you've lived in Nina. What's your background as far as other things? I know I've read this little background here, background design, manufacturing, hospitality, those type of things. What are some things that us as a council would recognize that you've done in the last 10, 15 years?
I was a developer behind the student housing at UW Fox Valley.
Okay.
I brought that project to fruition.
Okay, so that was your...
That was, that was my baby.
That was your baby?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how did you, okay, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, please.
How did you connect with those other, William Beal, Roger White, Adolfo DeValle? How did you connect with those other guys?
Those, that connection comes from Stephen Rourke. He's a gentleman based in New York. Stephen and I have known, known each other coming up on a decade now. Stephen, Stephen was a private banker before getting into real estate, real estate development and sustainable energy investment. And he and I have worked on hotel projects and multifamily development and various things over the course of time.
So have you, I know you mentioned about the, the housing project for UW Fox. So have you, you've done other projects outside of Wisconsin. There's something with Stephen Rourke, then I take it.
Yes. Well, yeah, we, we worked on some hotels down in Arkansas. Mostly, though, we've been trying to figure out, we're trying to bring Stephen here. For a very long time, that's been my goal with Stephen, kind of working on these other things on and off, which has all been fantastic, with the ultimate goal of bringing him here and trying to showcase this area. People in New York are talking about, well, we're going to build multifamily housing. Well, how much is it going to cost? Well, we're putting up brand-new apartments for $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 a unit.
Sure.
Which is absurd.
Right.
In, I mean, in the best case, that is an absurd number to spend building an apartment.
Yes.
You can build an entire building here for 5, for $500,000. So it's trying to get them to understand you can do so much more with your money. If, if for no other reason, your dollar goes further here, you can have a greater impact in a community for your money. So finally, the opportunity has, has come that we can do something here. We can bring outside money here. It isn't just the same people trying to do the same projects. It's showcasing this city, this community, this group of communities. So there will bring more money, more development. And it isn't trying to turn this into Manhattan. It isn't trying to turn this into Los Angeles because we can't charge $25,000 a month for an apartment.
Right.
But they understand, though, that you build market-appropriate residence, you're still gonna end up making a bunch of money, and you're still going to do something that's very good for the community. And they've seen the, the market study that you guys had done. You're short 2,000 units, 2,500 units, something like that of housing, of all, for all levels, from low income to high income.
Right.
And the goal is to start to kind of fill in that. You know, and that's not just housing. It's sort of like Alderman Taylor keeps saying, wanna showcase Manasha. Part of that is also creating new, new business opportunities, brand, you know, new office opportunities. Give people an opportunity who don't need, say, 10,000 square feet because there is a lot of people, especially on the east end, that have 500 square feet or 1,000 square feet. And there are some fantastic small businesses there. But there isn't an opportunity for them to have those on the west end. It's all sort of stuck. So now if we can start with, you know, bringing the east end towards the west and giving more opportunity, not just for, for housing units eventually, but also for business owners, because there's finally space for them to rent because right now there isn't. We'd like to give them that opportunity. Exactly, exactly. And the guys from New York, New York got it. You know, a 20% profit margin for a number is a 20% profit margin, whether it's here in Manasha or in Manhattan or in Miami, and that's a great number.
Okay. Grant, and you mentioned that, like, seven weeks, you'd kind of have something?
No, we're looking to close within seven weeks.
Okay.
But we will, we will be closing no later than presenting you a check for in, you know, by August 9th at the absolute latest.
Okay. And then you're gonna, you foresee something, and then in a few months after that, that there'd be some movement going on?
Yes. Yeah. The exterior is going to be done before the end of this calendar year, barring like an earthquake or something in downtown that would knock down half the buildings.
Well, understood.
We might ask for an extension at that point.
Right.
However, provided we can get through this and get to August 9th, we're gonna be, you're gonna see a lot of change very quickly.
Okay.
And it's not just on that building. We're gonna start to see progress on the other projects we're proposing. This group wants to get moving. Get moving very quickly.
All right. Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Manasha has wonderful opportunities for you.
Yes.
We do. And we've been working on this since 1985 with the Marina project down here. Our main street is completely brand-new almost. And certainly, we welcome you. We welcome your developers. We've been blessed to have local families in the Manasha, Nina area to help us with these projects in the past. And it's nice to see some new fresh faces coming in. And in the past, you know, we've had many 500 Fortune, 500, Fortune 500 companies right in, near our downtown, too, you know? right in, near our downtown too, you know? The Bonta Company, Graphic Packaging, Meat Paper, James River, Faith Technology, now with a beautiful building on our campus. And the American Can Company's in the, in the past. I had no problem with housing above the first floor or something. Our problem is that we really wanna talk to our director when he came on board not too long ago, that any type of development, we need to house the parking facilities, if you will, in a way, you know? If you notice, we have a nice arvavitas down there in two thousand. We redid the square. We wanted to shed, shield that from, that flat surface from the square. And, you know, we don't want snowmobiles, boats, all this stuff laying outside in the downtown, in the downtown area. So it's nice.
And importantly, I know you're asking about, are we going to do housing?
Yeah.
We're not, housing is not the primary goal of this, of this project. It, it just is not. This is, its best use is commercial. The ultimate goal is to hopefully get a restaurant on the ground floor and then some, then some number of office tenants, we're not sure how many yet, on the second and third floor. We know there are, Sam Trader says, says there are a couple restaurants who are interested. There, we know a couple more from the Milwaukee area who have been looking to bring, open a kind of an outlier up here in the Fox Valley. And it's a perfect location in downtown, across the street from Arena. Lots of warm bodies coming through there all the time. Absolutely perfect location for it. So that, that's our first best use for the building. Ground floor, preferably restaurant, but kind of any commercial tenant and an office on the second and third floor. With, sorry. Um, with kind of bringing up and kind of suggesting residential use at some point. Again, it was sort of, so it's on the record for some future use. Ten years from now, fifteen years from now, if it is to be sort of redeveloped again, they know it's on record as, okay, this could be a potential use for that building then. But that is not our preferred use. That's not the best use for the building at this time.
Okay. Alderman Sevigny, I always comment about, Main Street is full here almost every night with the restaurant next door. We definitely have a full Main Street almost every night for our restaurant. It's always nice to have other restaurants doing the area. I appreciate you looking around the community, as you have been. And, uh, and I know outside developers see so many different things and they think different than, than us. And we had a wonderful project about fifteen, twenty years ago. It was called the Van Yacht Project. And it was behind the Tackle Street, from Tackle Street to the Marina, to the Lox. And with the river there, the main river, they were gonna put in these finger canals that when you're in your condo, these were three-story underground parking, high-end condos. You're looking out across at your neighbor, across these finger canals that they would put in. So you're not looking out across at the, the factories over there. Okay? So it was really, really neat project. Things in the warehouse business kinda got sketchy at that time and people weren't warehousing. The, the family wasn't warehousing. So there was a big change that happened. Now they're going back to warehousing. So you may wanna look up that project through Sam. It was all, they assessed all the land down there from Tackle Street to the Lox all the way down to Shoot Street. So it was really a feasible project. So I know you guys think, think different, think big. So we got a lot of land for you across the river here.
And there's no such thing as a bad idea. It's some of, you know, some of the worst ideas have ended up being some of the best projects around the country. So there's some great stuff to be done yet. That's what we really wanna do here.
We appreciate your enthusiasm and we appreciate your know-how of the, of the cities there. And we certainly have been working very hard to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Krueger? Yeah, thank you. Well, first I, I wanna say, I don't think we've had a developer in here with this type of excitement and enthusiasm in a long time. And it's actually refreshing. And I wanna thank you for that. And when you approached the city years ago for the housing unit at UW Fox Valley, I asked you about a pilot program as a little guarantee and you had no hesitation whatsoever. And the way it sounds is that you have very good confidence that you're gonna be able to increase the value of the building well above what we were even initially thought it was worth to begin with. And I just had a quick question.
Yes.
Would you entertain a, a pilot at a guaranteed minimum for taxes, like at three, three hundred thousand? And if you, if you're planning on having the building worth eight hundred thousand, you know, you could be well above that anyhow, but just, just in case there's any type of hesitation.
So essentially, I apologize, essentially, so kind of like a guaranteed minimum value type?
Correct.
Okay.
And is that something that would be entertained?
We would absolutely entertain that, absolutely.
Right. Thank you.
I didn't know if you actually wanted to speak or?
Yes, I always wanna speak.
Usually you say neither one of us are supposed to speak, so.
No, no. I, um, I know Alderman Sevigny had mentioned, you know, potentially the public envisioning these as, as giving these properties away. So I just, I, I wanted to just touch base on, on a couple numbers that I don't know as if they have been made public throughout any of this process. The current asbestos within that building, it, it's roughly estimated at ninety-two hundred thousand dollars to remove. The elevator in twenty sixteen, we added in our capital improvements budget to fix when we were still there at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And by fix, I mean to modernize that with the new cab and everything, new motor. Uh, potentially, depending on, on the end-use and requirements by state statute, the sprinkler system could be seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars. The HVAC system, it is the original boiler. So again, depending on how this developer decides to go about that, could be anywhere in the range of two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're talking a half million dollars just to get the building up and not talking about the new facades, the new interiors, things of that nature. So again, in his proposal, Grant had mentioned up to five hundred to six hundred, and I'm not trying to
Oh, yeah, no.
chase you out of the, we've had, we've had these conversations. But, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, that it is known that it's not a move-in-ready building. That's, that's the reason the city moved over here. And while it was appraised at four hundred thirty-two thousand, some of these things have to be taken into account and as well as looking at, okay, the long-term maintenance of the city owning that property. It costs us roughly twenty thousand dollars a year to leave it in that condition. So those are, those are things that we need to take into consideration too. So, um, you know, again, I, it sounds like we're potentially moving into a closed session, but again, I wanted to make sure that is very well-known that it's not a move-in-ready building.
I have my questions answered, so I don't have one.
And if I, if I can just make one more, one more statement, kind of to follow up what Sam said, we are very familiar with all of the issues with the building. And we do not want this building torn down. Buildings have been torn down in the past in this city with the expectation of something happening and then nothing happened and continues to not happen. We don't want that to happen here. The building can, can, you know, sit there and can continue to just sit there and essentially rot away. And the longer it takes to sell, the more it's going to cost to potentially upgrade, where it's, wherein it will eventually get to a point where you have no choice but to tear it down. And now you're working, now you're working with a whole new building code, a whole different statutes of parking and sprinklers and elevators and et cetera, et cetera. And now you've gotta replace a one million dollar building with a three million dollar building. And you need to find a developer willing to put a three million dollar building here. Instead of being able to take, you know, take advantage of an asset you have that is a fantastic asset, it looks very cool, it's in an amazing location, and we can get going now. No more waiting, no more wondering. We can get going right now. We want to close within the next seven weeks and start moving now. We wanna put it back on the tax roll now. And we wanna continue working with the city for the next ten years, fifteen years, but starting now. No more thinking, no more fudgeing, start working right now. And we're ready to go.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here this evening. And I echo much of what my colleagues said. I just wanna back up a, a little bit. Yes, you mentioned before, and we all know you're on camera, so this is a little bit for the community too. Um, you mentioned before that you're in Nina and a lifelong resident. So I'm hoping that you'd be willing to share a little bit more about yourself, your background and your connections to this community.
Like beyond just enjoying long walks on the beach, that kind of thing?
Yeah. Cause we don't have a beach.
You do, you do in fact have a beach. You can't take a very long walk on it, but there is a beach.
We do, we do. It's not long.
Yeah, back and forth a few hundred times and it's fine. Um, no, I, I was born in Nina in nineteen seventy-seven. I went, I graduated from Nina High School in nineteen ninety-six, moved away to attend college at UW Green Bay and then moved right back to Nina. This is where I'm from. We've, we've spent time, my family's owned Uncle Ned's Deli in downtown Nina for some time. I don't know if any of you remember that from a few years ago. We supported, uh, streetball. We've been involved with UW Fox Valley. In fact, all five members of my family, my parents, my brother and sister and me have at different times all attended UW Fox Valley. We've built, we were a single-family home builder for a very long time, in fact, before we got into student housing. So we did before doing the housing at UW Fox Valley. My family has been employers. My grandfather owns Strawbill Paper up in Green Bay and throughout northern Wisconsin and UP. He employed, I think, two or three thousand people at six paper mills. We're invested in northeast Wisconsin. We've been here for a very long time. And now I'm raising a son here. I've got a four-and-a-half-year-old. It was an irritating little four-and-a-half-year-old, but that's why they make him cuter here.
It is.
Mm-hmm. So he's, he's gonna be attending 4K this year. And so it's understanding and trying to figure out the community that I wanna raise him in and what's important. And making sure that the community I raise him in, be it, you know, Nina, Manasha, Appleton, whatever, any community, is as best as it can be. And that's making sure we have the best opportunities for people to enjoy a downtown, to have, to have a job, to bring warm bodies around, so everyone can enjoy everything that these communities have to offer. To make sure all the shops downtown stay open. So they are there next year, five years, ten years on. The goal is to be able to bring warm bodies downtown. Ultimately, that is the goal, as many warm bodies as possible for as long as possible. And that's why projects like this are important. So because I've been here now for coming forty-two years, say for the few semesters at UW Green Bay, I wanna be able to see this community keep going for another forty-two years. And so my son and my, hopefully grandchildren will be able to continue to enjoy the same communities that I've enjoyed. And I hope that answered your question.
Yes.
At least well enough.
Yes. And you mentioned that you, I think, and your family are invested in northeast Wisconsin. So can you provide us with a few examples other, beyond the UW housing that you have been directly involved in?
Here, other than single-family construction, I can't. That's sort of where, you know, we got to a single-family, single-family housing and then UW Fox Valley. And then we started to get out of real estate for a while and we've been in manufacturing. So we, we were paper manufacturers. I own another company called Icon Material Handling. We manufacture hybrid jib crane robotic arms. And those are manufactured in Nina. We have another company called Apex Bridge Cranes. We're gonna be launching soon. Again, manufacturing here in Nina, supporting local manufacturers. It isn't just real estate. We do, we try to do as much as possible to maintain jobs here, to maintain people here.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and now I'm gonna be completely honest and, and just
Please be.
put it out in front of everybody. I certainly appreciate your ties to this community. At the same time, I, as I'm excited to see developers from different parts of the country, excited in what Manasha has to offer, there's also a certain element of risk that comes with that. And I'm sure that I'm not the only person that considers that in these sorts of situations. So help me understand what, or, or why this community should or can trust you and your relationships with these other people to create success in our community.
That's a very good question. I can only speak to my past of having been involved and wanting to continue to create something for the community. For, for, the, the student housing at UW Fox Valley, for example, we could have gone to any of the UW schools, any, any of them anywhere, but decided what's most important is one right in our backyard. That's where we should start. Ten years ago or so, when we did that project, it was a first of its kind. It was, I think, the first, maybe, I think there were only one or two other two-year campuses that had student housing. It was not a known quantity then. And that was a massive risk. We even had pushback from Madison. They were unhappy about it because they, they didn't like the fact that the two-year schools then were kind of gaining autonomy, as it were. It was a massive risk in order to create something for the community. And we undertook that risk. We're like, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna go piss off Madison because this is important for here. And we were entrusted with that. And we came in front of the city council and we said, this is what we're going to do. It's almost, it's practically never been done before. But if you put your faith in us, we're going to deliver. And we did. And it's a thriving student housing project. And they're looking, finally looking at doing phase two.
I was keeping that in the back.
And it, and it's growing. It's great for the school. It's great for, it's great for the area. We asked, we asked, we asked you to trust us once. And we, we're asking you to trust us again. We did some, we could have done it anywhere. The guys from Manhattan and the guys from Miami could put their money anywhere, anywhere in the country. But they're choosing to come here to Manasha, Wisconsin, in all honesty, out of the city that none of them have been to yet. But because of my love for this area and the fact that I've spent my life here and have decided to invest in this area is where I'm choosing to raise my son. My wife works at Theta Clark in the OR. We're invested here. This is where, where we want to stay. And they get it because this is a people-based community. This isn't a big business-based community. This is about the people. So because you trusted me once and I delivered, I'm asking you to trust me again. So we can deliver something again for the community.
And what is it about this group that you think will help you achieve that?
One, they've got the pockets to do it. This isn't a matter of, oh, well, we need to look at this building and then figure out some exotic funding solution from a public bond or something or whatnot. Stephen Rourke, the, the co-lead developer of this, is going to come here with a check and just hand you a check. There's no worrying about it. There's no wondering what the banks are gonna say. Are they going to say no? What's going to happen? Do we need to do a bond sale? Do we need to do all of this? He's going to come with a check. So we don't have to worry about, are, is the project going to run out of money? Are we going to get halfway through it and, oh my God, we need to come back to you guys? Asking forgiveness, I was saying, oh, we screwed up. There isn't, there isn't that problem. The, the money's there to do this right the first time.
Just like the Bucks owners.
Right.
From New York.
Exactly. They came in, they saw a fantastic opportunity. Exactly. They found an underutilized asset in the Milwaukee Bucks and they saw fantastic value there. And they spent the money. And they spent a lot of money. And the Milwaukee Bucks were a couple games away from going to the, to the NBA championship. And that's what we're going to do with, do with downtown Manasha. We're going to start here. When they bought the Bucks, they started in one place. It's, we're going to start making this improvement here, one thing. This is where we're starting. They have the money. When you can convince someone who lives in the Lower East Side of Manhattan to come to Manasha, Wisconsin, cause he's been everywhere, he's done everything.
But they haven't come here yet.
They haven't, no, but he is. He is, that's why, you know, one, we set the, whatever the closing date is, he's going to be here. If it wasn't for me really showing them, this is amazing, this is fantastic, this is a community you need to get behind, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have bothered. Just said, well, okay, it's a building. Who cares? They would just have moved on and done something else. But if you can convince them that, yes, this is a worthwhile community, this is a place where you want to develop, this is a place where you want to spend money. This is a place that is growing, has opportunity. That's something you wanna get behind.
Okay, they have funds?
Yes, they do.
And are there other qualities that you?
They are, they are very, very successful developers. They have developed over five billion dollars billion dollars in real estate, hundreds of thousands of square feet, if not a million square feet of commercial space. I think, some number of tens of thousands of homes, tens of thousands of multifamily apartment units.
So their...
They are successful real estate developers, too.
Their specialty is...
Real estate.
Real estate.
Of all kinds.
You, you mentioned that you've done single-family and the UW Fox in the past, but this is a new avenue for you.
Specifically, redeveloping a building is new for me.
Okay.
That is, that is, that is true. I have, I, I commit that. I've never done a building redevelopment before. I, I, I will, I will happily admit that.
Okay.
But in terms of, this is a simpler solution. The structure is there. We just need to make it prettier. We need to make sure the systems are, are up to date. That's no problem. In terms of a product type, this is a simpler, more straightforward thing to do.
And the developer or the group would own it for now during the renovation?
Yes.
And then have there been any conversations about the plan for...
We'd keep it.
After renovation?
Add it to the portfolio.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it is meant to be a long-term hold asset. Now, some of the, some of the teams, you know, some of the members of the team might exit, but in terms of kind of the team itself, members of the team are considering this a long-term hold. They are considering Manasha a long-term investment. This is going to be a new central, you know, center of development for them. It's not just doing this and then walk, you know, walk off. We're already, they're, we're already looking, working on some of the other properties as Alderman Sevigny has mentioned. We are looking at others, and they want to get started on them as soon as possible.
Well, it's good to know that it's being considered as a long-term...
Yes.
...asset, a long-term hold by the group.
And not, and not just turn into long-term with turning into a nonprofit. This will be a, a for-profit, tax-paying entity for as long as any of us are involved in it.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a boutique hotel I would like and spa. One thing, that building was built nineteen sixty-six or seven as Twin Cities Savings and Loan. And there's a huge vault in there, so you can bring that New York money and...
Yep.
Right there in Manasha.
Gold bars and stacks of dollars.
The only question I had, you're okay with the mural on the side of the wall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One, we have talked about possibly updating the lighting system for the mural.
Nice.
So that is one, that's one of, is one of the things we do budgeted for. We don't have the exact plan for it yet, because we do need to kind of survey the existing system. But we are looking though to at least look at that and update it to make sure that's properly taken care of.
We used to have a lot of really nice landscaping lights with it, so if you tie that into that.
We can definitely figure something out. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for your enthusiasm and coming to Manasha.
Yes.
And taking a building and not tearing it down.
Absolutely.
Which we've lost so many, even though it is not aesthetically that great. But bringing the eyes of other people from different communities, that's what we need. And I don't know what the buck is, why we can't use this as our model to see what you guys really can do.
Absolutely.
So you had to be drilled.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. This is far more gentle than I expected it to be, so this is okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to make the motion to offer, to accept the offer for purchase of 140 Main Street. Before we do that, we really do have to have a closed session. Why? Because we do. We, we do have to do that. And it should be pretty short, but if we don't do it, there's going to be an issue six months from now. So we do need to do that. It's not that we have anything that is negative to say about Grant, but we just knew, do need to do that beforehand.
All right. Short and sweet, right?
We'll do it as quick as we can. Did you want to make that motion stand up here?
Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'll move that we adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties and investing of public funds or conducting other specific business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second. Is a motion a second? I don't think we need discussion, anyone discussion? We do need a roll call vote, though, please.
Just...
And... Whoops, Steve? Closed session. Do what? Yes. We, okay. We, we will do our closed session. We can do it in the back room over there quick, so you guys don't have to exit.
Motion carried on, roll call eight-zero.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we go back into open session.
Second. So motion is second. I don't need a roll call for that, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are back in open session. If you would like to make your motion now, Mark, you can do that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to make the motion to accept the offer to purchase 140 Main Street. That's the former City Hall, and that would be from Grant Fisk and his people out of New York for the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
So motion is a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I did, I spoke with Grant, so I'm going to make an amendment to the motion to include a minimum guaranteed value of three hundred thousand dollars or equivalent annual pilot for ten years.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Is there discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Sevigny?
The way the motion was stated, the way the motion is stated, I don't want it that that's, you know, the way you stated it kind of says that that's where we're going to keep it at. That I don't like the way it was worded. I think what needs to be said is that it would be the minimum, and that my feeling is, is whatever is put into that building...
Minimum.
Minimum value, three hundred thousand.
Attorney, did you want to explain what that amendment would do?
What that would mean is if there is not at least a three hundred thousand dollar value...
Assessed value.
Correct.
Or the...
Of the property, that there would be an equivalent annual pilot payment based on that value for ten years. A payment would be made annually.
Okay, just so it's not that's what the pilot program will be, that it still is an assessable piece of property and that, so, cam on record at least.
Yeah, if the building was valued at eight hundred thousand, you would pay taxes on eight hundred thousand. If it was valued at two hundred fifty thousand, you would still pay taxes on three hundred thousand. Any further discussion on the amendment? Attorney Captain?
I just wanted to mention that there still is that provision about the tax exempt.
Sure.
That still is part of it, or not being taxed.
Alderman Taylor?
That was my question that the attorney just answered.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion. First, we have to do the amendment.
Right. So let's go back here to my, Alderman Taylor asked.
To re, hold on a second. Turn, the clerk is going to put that up on the board for you.
The amendment. Do you want anything in there?
Is that fine like that?
It's a minimum guaranteed assessed value of three hundred thousand or equivalent annual pilot for ten years. You don't want assessed in there? Yeah, you can only...
Guaranteed assessed value. Sure.
Correct. Or equivalent.
He said three. There you go. So that is the amendment.
Alderman Kruger?
Alderman Taylor, is that sufficient? Okay. So if we could have a, a roll call vote on that, please. Is it that late yet?
Motion carried on, roll call eight-zero.
And now we have the motion as amended. Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, can I make an amendment that he donates to my tree program?
So now we have the motion as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended? It's being done. We can just go back to the original.
Yeah. Just to accept the offer.
That's fine. Yeah.
Do you want me to add as amended?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So if we could have a roll call vote then on that as well? Sam is always busy. So the last item on the agenda this evening is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.